I'd like to open this regularly scheduled commission meeting on January seventh. Time is four ten P M and we will begin with the pledge of allegiance. We will start off with our citizens to be heard. County attorney should show up here soon, but I think we can proceed without him. So if we've got members in the audience, if you want to raise your hands, I'll call on you one by one. Gentlemen in the back, please come up and I would just like to remind everybody that we want to try and keep it to three minutes. Needs to go over a little bit to finish up, why feel free to do so and just state your name and identify yourself for the public and for us as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Lynn Jackson. Take a moment and welcome you two new members to the commission. I'm sure you're looking forward to it. I'm a forty-two-year resident of Grand County. I came when this was a mighty new capital, so I've seen those changes. I've sat on the deas between twenty thirteen and twenty sixteen, so I know what you're dealing with and what it's going to be like for you. I currently serve as Republican Party Chair. I just wanted to make a quick note tonight and remind people that not only the country, but our county voted for an alteration in our course this last election. And I don't, I don't know that we need a drastic alteration of that course, but it's time for change. Okay? What people voted for and what we voted for in Grand County and the two thousand registered Republicans I represented, we voted for less government. We voted for less taxation. We voted for fiscal responsibility, people we elect. We voted for openness and transparency. We voted for the protection of property rights, whether you like what something's going on on a piece of property or not, if they have the right to do it, they have the right to do it. We voted for business front. We voted for less regulation. We voted for common sense, practical, across-the-board solutions, not a one-size-fits-all. We voted for focusing on local needs. We voted to keep extremist organizations out of our government. And we hope that this new commission is capable of doing that. We think they are. This is the most balanced commission I've seen in the last decade. And there's a lot of people going to be looking at what you're doing and offering to help. So with that, welcome aboard Brian and Melody. Good luck to you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Next? Yes, sir.
Hey, Wagner. You've been here about thirty years, I guess. Congratulations to you two. I'm here to comment on some of your agenda items today. First one is getting rid of sporting timed entry. It's a meaningless gesture. Many of us remember seeing cars lined up down the highway trying to get in, which created a very dangerous situation. Timed entry works. Drop off revenue and visitations, not do timed entry. It's due to hotel rates. People who used to come here for two days or four days rather now come for two or don't come at all. You know, and the rip-off gas prices we have. I'm not saying they're colluding, but they certainly don't drop. Also, special events ordinance. It's not in the best interest of our community or the land around us to make it easier to have U T V rallies. Changing the number of people from two fifty to five hundred. You know, if we had five hundred individual U T Vs come here with one person each one, it would be a huge impact on our community and on that country. Also, eliminating responsible recreation in our advertising seems to be a very foolish thing to do. Educating the public on the potential damage they can create to a very fragile environment, I think is important thing. My last point is endless growth endlessly is not possible and frankly, it's a stupid thing. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it, Dave. And then I would like to move, we've got a hand up online and I can't read that. Cassie? Cassie, if you want, go ahead, please.
Thank you. My name's Cassidy Jones. I'm the Senior Visitation Program Manager with the National Parks Conservation Association. We're the leading nonpartisan, nongovernmental mental organization that advocates for the parks. I'm also a lifelong Utahan. I focus on visitation issues facing national parks across the country for N P C A. And I can confidently say that Arches' timed entry system is an exemplary science-based program for managing crowding and congestion. This park is particularly good at collecting data about reservation use, analyzing that data, and making really smart adaptive changes. They're constantly fine-tuning. I really encourage the council to continue to support this system. Timed entry has been used and used over a couple of other parks, including Rocky Mountain, where it's been working really well since about twenty twenty. Overall, in my experience, reservations are popular. They create certainty for visitors. They protect resources and most importantly, they really keep operations sustainable, which is just vital for a park like Arches. I want to close by saying that the park has done so much to address crowding and congestion over the years. Alternative transportation planning, park-wide maintenance, right? Traffic congestion management. And this is the thing that works the best. It is one of the visitor use management tools and we firmly believe it's the best for this current moment. So we'll join lots of other visitors. An independent study by the Utah, by Utah State University suggests that eighty-three percent of visitors who came to Arches National Park in twenty twenty-two wanted reservations for future visits. And we really encourage you to continue to support and help sustain the park and its timed entry system in the future. Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate your time and comments. Do we have anybody else? Yes, please come forward. See, if you could either sit or use the microphone over there, you can have your choice. It won't pick your voice up for others. The recording won't catch you. That microphone's really finicky.
Say I've been here sixty-two years in June. It seems to be a bit of a contest about your soul just to appear today. Without any hostility about change, I want to thank you all for being here. I couldn't help but notice that my great, that my grandfather's name, L L Taylor is on the plaque out there. He was chair of the commission in nineteen thirty-seven when this building was built. Nobody in my family has had the guts to run since then. I had his offer to you guys for being here because it's a thankless job. And my grandfather probably couldn't fathom why I'm here today to beg you for some protection from flying objects in the sky. I'd like to leave a copy of this with you guys because what I'd like to have is an agenda item in the future instead of my three minutes today, which I've already used up standing. But I would like to request a future agenda discussion about aircraft use in Professor Valley, specifically takeoffs and landings at Fisher Towers. This plea follows a disastrous event on the afternoon of Saturday, November thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, which is one of the biggest days in Moab, the last of the season, the Saturday after Thanksgiving, when a motor glider stopped on my trail ride and I'm lucky that no people were killed. I do have ongoing great expenses on vet bills, refunds, attorneys' fees, a lot of stuff. This outlines it. Solutions reparations. My first request is for the Grand County Attorney to press charges for damages. The pilot threatened our public safety and caused extreme injuries. The Grand County Sheriff's Office knows the individual and has statements from the individual participants, excluding the two children who were on my ride. This is my fifteenth year leading trail rides out there. As we speak, we're finishing up with a family of five from Puerto Rico who are here in January. I would like to continue safely. I believe that this outlines rules of the air that showed if you're a motor glider, you need to be over five hundred feet. The guy that violated this said he was two hundred feet and seemed to think he was well within his rights. This is an issue all over Grand County, Spanish Valley, all of that. But I am suffering from it. So I would, I have met with the Bureau of Land Management and I would like to move forward with their help and yours to have further discussions about how we can protect ourselves, the cattle, the grave upgrades out there, everything from these guys that are coming too low. So I am going to leave it at that because I know you have a lot to do. Even this, this thing, the paramotor code shows five hundred feet. There it is. There's a horse. Two hundred wasn't enough. Here's an incident Boulder, Colorado, hit and run. Fifty people got injured. So I'm requesting an agenda item. I don't know exactly. Thank you so much for serving and carrying me on.
Thank you for leaving that and we'll see that it gets circulated around and thank you for your many years of residency here. In the competition tonight, I believe you are in the lead. So it is, it's a young night. So if there's anybody else online, I don't see any hands. I am, okay, yes, Mr. Green, please proceed.
Forty-four years in Grand County. I'm not as close, but I'm closer. So congratulations on the start of the new year. Real quick, got two things for you. First of all, I don't know if you heard earlier today, but lots of sirens heading out south of town. Just wanted to draw some attention to the highway corridor going south once more. We had another accident out this time by Stocks Drive. Would really like to have the county push for UDOT to look into that area, see if we can consider getting the road widened out there. Also to look at the decreasing the speed limit in that area. It's getting pretty dangerous out there, especially at night. It's very dark. If you guys get a chance, go for a drive out there, you'll see what I'm talking about. There are no lights once you pass the arena so that you cannot see where any of the turnoffs are. And it's been pretty crazy out there, especially when there's bad weather. So I just wanted to kind of bring that to your guys' attention, see if you, that's something you guys could consider. Maybe sending a letter to UDOT to have them expedite anything that they have planned for the one ninety-one going south out of Moab. The second thing I wanted to talk to you guys about is the land use code. And specifically, section three point one D, or I'm sorry, three point one C, which is camping outside of a permitted recreational vehicle park campground or travel trailer park is prohibited in all zones, meaning that if my kids wanted to camp in my backyard this summer, you guys are going to have to write them a ticket for breaking the law. It's such a broad brush to be painting with when it comes to enforcing legal camping in Grand County. When I was the code enforcement officer there a couple of years ago, I actually did have a person try to use that law to go after a birthday party while I was there. And of course, I was told like, we don't, you know, we, we got to use common sense and not, you know, use that law to go after things like that. But the law is law, so we can't really pick and choose how it's applied to people. So I would like to ask that you guys finally eliminate that that section in the land use code. So if you guys could please look into that as well, because I mean, even just going outside and letting your kids spend the night in the backyard in a tent is breaking the law in Grand County. And I think it's time that we address that and get it fixed. So that's all that I have. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Josh. Appreciate your time and comments. Anybody in the oh, okay. All right. Sorry, I'm going to go with one more online before we switch back to the lobby here. A J, please go ahead.
Thank you, Bill. I'll keep it extremely short and sweet. I just wanted to state that I think the county should formally and fully oppose the timed entry reservation system. I would also take the opportunity to thank Brian and Melody in advance for the breath of fresh air that I know you'll bring. So thanks to everyone and the new members specifically.
Thanks, A J. And Pete, you were hands up next.
Join us. My name is Pete Gross. When I read through the agenda a few days ago, I double-checked my calendar. I want to make sure it was April Fool's Day. In particular, items six, seven, and eight defy common sense. Let me take the easy one first, the park service timed entry. I won't, I won't repeat everything everybody else said, but it makes sense. It's, you know, the wild, you know, line went outside. It's a vast improvement over the prior chaos of eating restaurants, outfitters, hotels. They take reservations because people like the certainty and just all that. Okay. Second, number seven. As most of you know, I've worked in the guiding industry for forty-five plus years. I guided river trips in Idaho, Grand Canyon in Utah. And one of our primary responsibilities as guides is to educate people about responsible recreation. It enhances their experience, protects the resource for future visitors. And so that's just a major part. That was a major part of what we do. And it's also some of the best advertising. They realize how much we care for the resource and want to protect it, makes them want to do the same. I mean, one of the things that was my first river trip in the Grand Canyon, when they first started implementing, you pee in the river. And I know that sounds a little bit, you know, but realize when people, and most people would not have thought that, it doesn't make sense intuitively. When you go up and pee, you get buckled bushes. After a while, it really stinks in the desert park. And especially in a high flow, you know, you try to do it with water flowing. So anyway, you know, the idea of not educating people about responsible, responsible recreation. To me, it's akin to having food labels without food preparation instructions. Anyway, it just doesn't make any sense. Okay, I saved what I think is the most egregious proposal for last item six. You notice this T shirt I'm wearing. This was in response to back in twenty twenty-one, this body and the city council both rewrote their noise ordinances. They hired a consultant from the executive director, co-founder of the noise pollution clearinghouse to rewrite the noise ordinances specifically to address the outpouring of complaints from excessive noise. Interestingly, in response to all the city and county efforts, the Blue Ribbon Coalition sued Moab Grand County and even named some specific individuals. It's worth noting that Judge Torgerson dismissed all twelve counts of that lawsuit with prejudice. To me, that sounds like he thought the case had been buried. So I think the idea of removing take, you know, paying attention to noise, crowding and other disruptive impacts, I think that's a step in the wrong direction. It's a step backwards. So I would encourage you just, I mean, I would, I would cancel all three of those proposals. Oh, and one thing, the idea of, you know, fast-tracking the special events. I mean, would we promote, would we treat a tobacco event in Grand Canyon the same as an Easter egg hunt or an art block? You know, I mean, it's not all events are created equal and we should ascertain how serious, how, you know, the importance of mitigating their impacts individually. And just on the closing of, I'm a dude cover here too. I've barely been here a third century. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. Anybody else in the audience? Seeing nobody. Oh. There, there will be another comment period at six o'clock and that will depend on whether it possibly could end up after these items as we go through our agenda. So there is a second comment period at six.
Can I say something quickly? Lynn, when, when we started, remember we had comment period at each agenda. I think that was changed a long time ago, quite a long time. I can't even remember when that it was decided it would be more expedient and then allow people to know what time they could, what time they had instead of waiting for the agenda item. So it made it simpler for the individuals to talk. So that's, that's why, I think that's why you thought, and I'm assuming.
Okay, so so you would like to come forward if you're raising your hand, Audrey, is what you're saying?
Yes, please do.
I sat up there at that. Yes, for eight lovely years, from two thousand and four to two thousand and twelve, and it's a hard job. So it's, it's hard, but it's also good. So I am also concerned with the, first of all, I think the timed entry, it's not going to make a big difference, but I do in terms of what we can say for the park service, honestly, and I do think that the timed entry is working wonderfully. I also have a problem with the, the city supports timed entry and they've said that several times and it doesn't feel like working with the city. During my time on the council, we made a huge effort to work with the city and it worked very well. And I think we need to get back to that. I really hope that people can support that. I know it's very hard as an administrator to arrange meetings for, for the city, but that's on the agenda, but I really hope you guys will get back into that habit. I do feel like with the advertising thing, that visitors feel good when they know how to visit this area. And I know I feel good if I go to a new place, knowing what's expected of me and what I'm going to get dirty looks for. So I would just assume know exactly what I'm in, what I'm in a new place. It helps me feel competent and it connects me with the area. And then I agree with the current economic development plan. I really feel like all these are major changes in our values and in our policies. And yeah, they're opening the new year saying, hey, you want to make changes. But I also am not confident that they've been worked on enough to even know what possible consequences there could be to making those changes because some of them are fairly major. So closing just really wants us to get supported together with the city greatly. I think that is economically, that's politically the most expedient thing we could do. Thank you so much. Welcome, honey. Brian.
Thank you, Audrey. Anybody else in the room like to come forward? And Lynn, I know you had comments on one of the agenda or some of the agendas, but please come up, try and be brief. I know you used most of your three minutes already, so.
Again, Lynn Jackson, I should also mention I spent thirty-two years in the Bureau of Land Management in this region. So I have a little bit of idea about how public lands go. In regard to the park service reservation system, I think there were a lot of questions that were never answered succinctly or sufficiently for the public. I don't ever recall any discussion publicly of other alternatives to deal with congestion. How about larger parking lots? How about some new trails to Arches? How about a new access point through Salt Valley? How about a better staff visitor center than, excuse me, entrance station? The other thing we never saw was an economic analysis. Now, from the federal government days, when you do big projects like this, you do a thing called an environmental assessment under the National Environmental Policy Act. And under the requirements of that, you do a socio-economic analysis. What are the impacts from this decision? I don't ever recall seeing it. Maybe one was done. I don't recall seeing it. What we know, and I'll real quick here, Bill, shut up, is that we know the park service visitation is down significantly in Arches. Yeah, it is. We have the data. You can look at business data. Business is down. So if we're going to keep growing government and providing revenue for government services and we're in a, we've got a system that's resulting in less visitation, who's going to make up the difference? It's going to be property taxpayers somewhere down the road. Thank you, Bill, for the, I'll, I'll hold the seat for that next.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in the lobby want to come forward? Oh, I'm going to go with the lady here in the audience first and we'll go to the online.
My legal name is Christine Brown, however, almost everybody knows me as Tina Brown. And I support the timed entry into Arches because I feel that if people have a timed entry, they will have time to see town, time to get a meal, time to shop. I know this is not exactly a study, but I think it makes a lot of sense. If people have bad experiences here, they won't come back. And I've heard a lot of people say that it's a better experience with timed entry to come to Arches. I also support our advertising to educate visitors on how to preserve our area, possibly even to take care of themselves in terms of enough water, et cetera. Our economy does depend on the natural wonders we have. And I also support the current economic development plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, team. Appreciate your time. And let's see, we can go to Ian online now.
Hello, my name is Ian Machard. I am a local paramotor pilot here. I'm also a paraglider pilot. I'm in the base community. I'm in the skydiving community. I like to recreate outdoors. So I think I can speak for everyone in the paramotor community that, you know, it's definitely, no one wanted to see anyone get hurt. We, I understand there was this accident that happened at the end of November. So I'm also interested in knowing if an item does come up on the agenda and how to, how to be a part of that conversation. I'm an admin on the paramotor group. And so I think that we would like to work on education, you know, if there's areas where the paramotors pilots shouldn't fly, perhaps we can start with, you know, you know, with some education about what's best and how to, you know, how to handle and recreate safely with everyone around. So I just wanted to say that if there's a way for me to stay in contact with the group and be a part of that conversation in terms of trying to provide some education, the paramotor group is willing to do that. Thanks.
Thanks, Ian. We appreciate that. Is there anybody else online that would like to speak up? Okay, then anybody else in the lobby here that would like to come forward and speak? Okay, then at this point, then I'm going to close comment period here at four o'clock. And if you want to hang around for six o'clock, you're welcome to. And also I'm going to at my discretion move the number eight agenda item to right now in place of number one. And I've, several reasons, I want to do that out of respect to Lena's time, the superintendent of Arches. Participate in the discussion we have. I would also like to just say that she was generous enough to give Prime Commissioner Martinez and myself better than two hours of her time today to try and work through some of the concerns that we have. And the, the reason for the letter in the agenda is because we do have some concerns and whether they're legitimate concerns for every individual, that might not be the case, but as a new commission going forward, we feel that it was important to bring it to the attention of the park and to participate in the guiding and the direction moving forward. And Lena, Lena has generously allowed us that time today, so.
Bill, did you want to move that item up before the general reports and the commission member disclosures?
If possible, I would like to, because I know that there's people in the public here that would like to leave and if that, if that's okay, I would like to do so. Yes, and Lena, you can come up to the discussion now as we open that item. Did you have anybody else online? I know that the one lady was spoken citizens to be heard there, but is there anybody else?
No, I have in the room with me Amy Tindick, who's our park planner, just in case you all have a question that's a little bit more detailed than I'm able to answer.
Welcome to join you up there. Amy, she was also part of the meeting today earlier, so. And thanks, Jac. I probably should have got the reports out of the way, but here we are. Rick Jac is doing a great job of training me and so Training me as the new chair here, and I'll do the best that I can with what I have, so.
So I do have a short statement to, just to share some information, provide some context based on the draft letter, would that be a good time to, to read that and then proceed, or would you like?
Yep, I think that's a good time to do that.
Well, good afternoon, thank you all for allowing me time today to speak on your agenda, I appreciate the opportunity to, to be here. Uh I serve as superintendent of Arches National Park, and I am also a member of this community, but uh I think I win as the newest member. Because I've only been here a year. Uh I, that means I win, right? Um I'm also a member of this community, and that's important to me. In the year I've been here, I've grown to love this community, and I greatly empathize with the business owners who experienced a downturn in income in recent seasons. We spoke about that this morning. I believe we all have common ground in the desire to ensure visitors continue to come to this area and have a positive experience while they're here. As the chair said, as, as Bill said, we did have a productive meeting this morning, I really appreciate both Commissioner Winfield and Commissioner Martinez's time. And I believe there's great opportunity moving forward to ensure we continue to hear and respond to uh concerns and, and. Input from community members such as yourselves, as well as other members of the public. As many of you know, visitation to Arches National Park grew significantly between twenty eleven and twenty twenty-one. This increase was concentrated during certain hours, causing congestion at key park destinations, reducing visitor enjoyment and increasing resource damage. During times of peak congestion, prior to implementing the vehicle reservation pilots, the park had to temporarily close its gates on a regular basis until crowding lessened. Resulting in many visitors being able to, unable to enter the park at all, or at their preferred time. Three years of piloting timed entry vehicle reservations have demonstrated success in reducing congestion, improving visitor experiences, providing reliable access to the park. And distributing visitation throughout the day. Over the last three summers, visitors arriving with the appropriate vehicle reservation and park pass have a guaranteed entry to the park. The park accepted public feedback in November twenty twenty-three about past visitor experiences under the twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three pilot programs. And long-term strategies for visitor access. A draft visitor access experience plan released in October twenty-four and available on our park website. Was grounded in feedback we received as end, end results of those pilot programs. It presented timed entry reservations as the preferred alternative. Comments received during the public engagement periods of that plan are now being analyzed and incorporated. But the current planning process is not done, as I em- emphasized this morning. Nothing has been finalized, there's no signature on it, we're still in the process of reviewing public comment and incorporating them. We continue to work through those comments and incorporate feedback from key stakeholders such as yourselves. We have already made adjustments to the program after listening to public feedback and assessing visitor use data over the last three years. For example, we recently moved advanced ticket sales from three months out to six months out to accommodate those who like to pre-plan. Here are also adjusting our twenty twenty-five pilot that's upcoming here in a few months. To not require reservations during the hottest weeks of summer, when we've seen a decline in visitation during that timeframe. The adaptive nature of this program as it is in the, in the draft plan allows us to continue to monitor, adjust, and adapt. It also importantly does not exclude us from future planning, so discussions about bike paths or trails or changing traffic patterns can and will continue to occur. I am committed to continuing to engage the community to ensure the best outcomes for our visitors. It is true that Arches annual visitation has fallen these last few years to between twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen levels. But when you look at that on a monthly level, we've had slightly higher monthly visitation, I'm sorry, not slightly, we've had significantly higher visitation in April, May, September, and October. Slightly lower visitation in June and noticeably lower visitation in July and August as compared to twenty fifteen. For all the months outside of timed entry, visitation has also been higher than twenty fifteen. And when you compare Arches' visitation trends to the other mighty five parks, you will see a very similar decline in visitation in the months of July and August at Rice. Zion, Capitol Reef, Capitol Reef and Canyonlands, where their visitations recently have also been comparable to twenty fifteen to twenty sixteen levels. So this decline during the hottest summer months appears to be happening on a more regional scale. During the hottest weeks of summer where we've seen the biggest declines in visitation, we've also seen a lack of demand for park access, which is why we're. Uh gonna try out a six-week period where we don't require reservations this coming summer. The uh, this is evidenced by reduced timed entry ticket sales, or tickets not selling out on any given day, and fewer visitors entering before and after timed entry is in effect each day. The most recent contractor-led socioeconomic analysis finalized in twenty twenty-three, which is publicly available on our website as well. Concluded that the twenty twenty-two pilot timed entry system did not result in a significantly statistically significant or measurable negative change. In local area economic activity relative to the twenty sixteen to twenty nineteen comparison period. We specifically excluded comparisons to the years twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one due to the unprecedented impacts of COVID nineteen. The twenty seventeen study cited in the letter for the commission was based on a weight of evidence approach because data was insufficient at the time of the analysis. The most recent study that we used in our, in our draft economic analysis, I'm sorry, in our draft environmental analysis, used observed data. And associated evidence from the twenty twenty-two timed entry pilot to its analysis, and I provided that to both commissioners this morning, to make sure they had access to it. I spoke at the beginning about visitor experience and how important it is that we work together to ensure visitors to this area have, as of, have a positive experience. Recent visitor surveys have shown that Arches' visitors come to this area for multiple days and visit multiple other sites during their time here. This likely helps to insulate overall local travel and tourism businesses from fluctuations in Arches' visitation. Visitor surveys and data from timed entry ticket sales have also shown that visitors have been largely successful in attaining timed entry tickets for their preferred day and time. And have been overwhelmingly supportive of the system moving into the future. One last important point I'd like to make, I promise I've almost done, is that moving forward with the timed entry system at Arches does not exclude us from future planning. Or improvements, we can look at options for uh improving existing facilities, making trail improvements, bike paths or bike lanes, and other such plans. This current plan is not a silver bullet, but it is a first step in managing for the future of Arches in a way that accommodates diverse visitor preferences and needs. We look forward to working together with the community and the, and the uh the council here, both in adapting the timed entry system where needed. And as we plan for the future visitation at Arches. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to take any questions that anybody has.
Thanks, Lena, I appreciate that, and thanks, Amy, for being here. Front and center with the public now. I um was notified by a attorney here that we, because I did skip this so far forward, we missed. Commission member disclosures, and so I'd like to allow that to happen here amongst the commission as we. Proceed on this item, and then we'll go back to our regular session.
And, and for new commissioners and all alike, just a reminder that um at the beginning of the meeting, we often provide an opportunity on certain items that we're looking through. So I think we, do we wanna do it for the whole agenda, or do we wanna do it for just this item and then repeat it back again for the entire agenda?
Um I can repeat.
Okay, so for this, for this item, it's just when you have um anything that you would wanna disclose, or there may be something that raises a level of restricted conflict. Um those are the two things to highlight, and I'll talk about that when we go back to this item again, so if anybody has any questions, uh let me know.
Okay, and I mean, I've already mentioned it, but I will restate the fact that both Brian and I spent time with Lena today, and uh. Not that I think there was anything outlined with that, but I wanna make sure that everybody's aware, and I will maybe ask Brian if he would later hear some, at some point. Forward the. Um email that Lena sent us with that economic data, because it, I haven't had a time, chance to dig into it, but I'm sure I'll go to Jacque, you had to send it up first.
Yeah, I did, yeah, I, the disclosure for sure, so I wanna disclose, I'm gonna recuse myself from this. Uh because I signed a letter in support of the reservation system on behalf of the uh businesses, or the business that I am affiliated with. Um I signed the letter because I felt that the reservation system had evolved into a good and working model uh that benefits local businesses like mine. Um as I said, I am going to recuse myself, and I would also ask that uh. Uh plainly ask the commissioner, Martinez also consider doing the same thing, as he's a, a general manager of a business that also. Um or whose finances are even more directly related to park visitation than the business that I uh work for. Um so that'll be it, and I won't participate in the discussion or the vote.
Thank you, and Brian, you had your.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm, I just wanted to disclose that I'm a concessionaire of Kinglands National Park. Um however, I am the general manager, I don't have any financial interest either which way. Um and I could actually look at that, the reservation system both helps and does affect my business, so it could go either way. So I, I, I don't feel that I need to recuse myself from the conversations.
Anybody else? All right, thank you, Lena, sorry to interrupt that discussion, but we can move forward and I'll. Open it up at this time for. Somebody to either make a motion or for this, any discussion or questions we have for Lena and Amy.
Chair, perhaps take advantage of your, for the life of folks here, maybe if there's any questions for them, and then if the commission wants to take it back and have the discussion, so, sure.
I don't have a motion.
Nope, if you wanna have questions, whatever.
Oh, I don't have questions, do you, can we make comments, or, or do you wanna just stick to questions right now for Lena?
No, I'm fine with comments, we can just open up the discussion, and eventually it'll end up in a motion if there aren't questions for Lena.
Okay, so I wanna kind of backtrack a little bit, uh we had already written a letter of support of timed entry, um. I can't remember if it was a meeting or two ago, but I kinda wanna outline how that went, when we're, when we receive. Uh basically solicitation from land management agencies, it comes to the entire commission, and it kind of sits there. Until a commissioner takes a hold of it, it sat there. I said, I'm happy to write the letter, uh anybody on our commission could have taken a hold of that and done the same. The thing that I think I did very gracefully was I wrote the letter, I tried to do it quite a bit ahead of the meeting. And then I gave about a week for people, I put it in a Google Doc, and I said, please make comments, let's parse this out, let's needle this out. I got very few comments. If it, I think I got a couple. And so then when it came to the time, the commission meeting. You know, then we started having some pushback, which I think is, you know, one of the comments, if I remember, Bill, is, you know, you feel like we should make it public and open in public, and I agree, I, I, I do agree with that. That some of those more contentious issues, you know, maybe we can needle out new, small nuances, but then we should open those up. However, I felt like there was ample opportunity from the entire commission to bring up large issues at that time. And it should have been done, and that never really came to light, so we made a vote, sent that letter, I think we. Did that all in open and public in a very productive manner, and so I was a little taken aback when this came, when this became an agenda item. And I guess when I say that, hopefully we will be a commission that with larger value shifts, which this actually is a very, very large shift in our value system. That we can workshop items, we can come together as a commission, we could have a workshop, and we could needle out nuances. But to have actually three major agenda items that are a fairly large value shift without bringing us together in a workshop. I'm taken aback, and I feel I'm just taken aback, and, and I'll just, I just wanna lay out that history.
Yeah, sure, Mike, go ahead.
I'm a broken record here, so. Uh last year, how many people were turned around at the gate?
I, I can't give you the exact number. Okay. Because we, yeah, we track the numbers, but um across the season, it's between fifteen and eighteen percent.
Okay. Out of the fifteen and eighteen percent, how many of? I could do a quick math with the total visitation ma- uh number there, how many of those people were? Not questioned, but uh surveyed on what they felt about the Arches' timed entry uh system?
Yeah, so we don't, as you know, I, I've answered this question before, we don't survey the people who get turned around, what I can say is, I know from experience, having spent time in the booth. Maybe you can say the same thing, that many of those people do end up coming to the park, they get either same day or often even later that same day reservation, so. Visitors are surveyed, so people who got turned around and still got into the park are part of that survey, people who got turned around and chose not to try to come back are not part of that survey, so.
Understand, but uh as a business manager, uh a business owner in town, uh as a business manager in town, fifteen, eighteen percent, even potential is. A, a huge number uh to sway, uh and. That is my, I mean, as I've stated for the last three years, that's my biggest concern, is that fifteen to eighteen percent. Uh financially, it, it is directly impacting town. I am no longer tied financially to that, that's why I didn't disclose, but it is a. It is an unacceptable uh loss in revenue for anyone who hopes to live or have business or support uh themselves in town.
What I will say, um I hear where you're coming from, what I will say is. We have not thus far had the ability to do that survey, because we know that many of them are still able to get in. Uh and we know that ticket sales are often still available even on the busiest days, same day or next day. Folks have the ability still to come in, many of the folks who get turned around, and probably back, pretty much all of them. Didn't know there was a timed entry requirement, and we are working very hard on the messaging and the public information, we talked about that today as well. To make sure that we better educate people, because if we educate them, there are reservations available for those folks, they're, they're not, they're not aware of the system, they show up at the gate, and then. They become aware of the system at that time, and so we are working really hard on some signage and some messaging campaign that I think you'll already see is starting to improve. So, thank you for your.
Very.
Uh yes, uh comment is that uh, you know, Arches has increased uh its visitation by almost ninety percent since two thousand and. Said to, uh, okay, I'm sorry, is my, is it working? Okay, uh my uh visitation in Arches has increased since two thousand and five by almost ninety percent. That's huge, and almost, it's unsustainable, and because of that increase, that is why we're here today, or ended up with a reservation system. And um my experience is that it has, it has worked well. I've had many, I, my house is a constant visitation, they will come to my house to visit all the time. Some of them come to Moab and they have their reservation, and some of them come and they go, oh, oh, I didn't realize. And we get online, and we usually get a reservation for the day they want. We've never had an issue, and I would say we had probably fifteen to twenty visitors come and stay at our home every year. And uh the other thing is that uh when, what we didn't like to get in ears, but not to train Mike, that you said that people aren't. Uh surveyed that were turned around. In the same sense, before the reservation system, we don't know how many people weren't coming to Moab because of the lines. On number of times when I was visiting Denver, when I was uh vacationing, and I would mention that I was from Moab, some people didn't know where it was, but a lot of places, especially when I was in Denver. Would comment, oh, we're, we're gonna, we, we were thinking about coming to Moab, but we're choosing to go to bluff. Until the reservation system, they didn't call it timed entry because at that time it was being referred to as a reservation system. So I think when our lines were huge. And they were, they were dangerous, there were people that were choosing not to come to our town because of the congestion at, at, uh, at Arches. Uh secondly, it wasn't just the lines, it's the problem, all is, it's, people would go in and have to circle the. Parking lot six, seven, and eight times in order to find a parking space, and if you have kids especially, that is not, and it's not. Worked towards having a wonderful vacation, and thirdly. I, eh, we are so fortunate to have Arches next to us. If we had been a mining town in the desert like we are, were. And we hadn't had Arches and Canyonlands, we would be probably close to a ghost town at this point. So I, 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 I'm, I mean, they saved, they saved us on many, on many, many levels, Arches and Canyonlands saved our, our economy. Because they're there, but it's not the mission of national parks to take care of the economy of the. Lucky folks that are living next to them. It is a byproduct, it is a byproduct of our advantage of having the people. Live here next to a park. And their goal is to protect and preserve that land for future generations. That is what is their number one goal, and the reservation system is doing that. Prior to that, I spoke to many uh uh different rangers and such that were, came to Canyon Country Partnership, or I saw them elsewhere. And they, you know, they, they were saying, all I'm doing is managing people and parking. And I, I mean, they were having a hard time doing their job. So it's not just the congestion of getting in, it was very much affecting the quality of the care of our park, which is a golden goose. So it's not just the congestion of getting in. It was very much affecting the quality of the care of our park, which is a golden goose. And so I think it's, we should commend Arches. For coming to the table. To, and, and had from the very beginning when we started this way back when it was Kate Cannon. They wanted to work with Grand County to make sure that our economy wasn't jeopardized by, you know, they did. They didn't have to do that. That is not their mission. But being good neighbors and being people that want to support and work with our local community, they came forward. And had, I don't know how many meetings I went to. And uh, talked about, and we talked about different things and. They're analyzed from having another entrance, which would maybe solve the cars coming in. But it wasn't going to have any impact on the number of people in the park and being able to find parking spot. Uh, it was not uh, feasibly fought, possible financially possible to do a shuttle system. All these things were looked at and they should continue to be looked at. It'd be great if, if we could have a nice parking uh, buses at the. Future hopefully park at the Umtre project and have buses, electric buses go up into Ca- uh, Arches. I would love to see that. And I think they would love to see that as well. Uh, but I think at this point timed entry is definitely the, the best move forward to protect. The park. And I think, do not think we can point to one item and say, that is why our economy wasn't growing as fast as in the past. There's a lot of reasons. And to single out one thing, just to like all of a sudden say, oh, all you hotels have to lower your prices because you're the reason. We don't have visitors. It, 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 it's just not. It doesn't make sense to say, say, take one of the many things that may be affecting our economy. And then uh, say that we don't support them. Uh, and I want, I've gotten calls from the city, city, the mayor. And city councilman and they're, they're really mad. They said those people that were the recently elected ran. That they wanted to work with the city and the first thing they do out of the gate is uh, vote in a way that is against what they have been voting for. So there has been. I, I, you know, I would like to make a motion to uh, not approve the letter. Proposing to re-move our support of Arches National Park. I'll second that. And then when possible, I'd like to.
So we've got a motion on the table and a second by Trish. So we've got a couple ahead of you, Trish. I see your hand over there. So. We can open it up for discussion at this time further, Brian.
Yeah, yeah, um, yeah, thanks so much. Um, I just wanted to, to, to run in and first, you know, I, I agree with Derek, you know, on that point that, you know, we are so fortunate to have Arches National Park in our backyard. Um, you know, one of the things I was discussing with you, right, is that, you know. Oh, that whether we, whether um, there's causation or, you know, it's a, a, a correlation, right? It doesn't really matter, right? Our, our future is tied to Arches National Park. Right? And Arches National Park is tied to our future. And, and, and there's a shared cost of that. Right? And so, you know, we have to, we have to understand that, you know, things that happen in Arches, right? That may, you know, that, that, that might be good for Arches can have a negative effect on Grand County. Right? And that's what I think this is all about right here. Um, moving off to one thing that Trish had said right there, is I do remember I was sitting out there in the audience during the meeting and, and, and you did mention that if, you know, if. Bill didn't like what that letter said, that he should write his own letter. And, and, and I think that's what this is right here is, is, is his own letter sitting on top of that. Let's see here, you know, uh, fifteen, uh, I looked at some of these numbers right here. And, you know, we look at it and we're capped at basically about one, uh, one million four hundred fifty thousand people. That's, that's about what the, the visitation is capped at right now in Arches, uh, looking at, at the last three years. Um, right there. And we talked about that, that it's the same trend that's happened throughout all of the other national, uh, modified national parks. And I'm looking right now at Capitol Reef's uh, 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 use and Capitol Reef's use has been going up. Even in the summer months that we were just kind of discussing right there. Uh, so, you know, there is some question between, between some of the socioeconomic data. That the park is provided and, and data that I'm seeing right there. And I think that's one of the biggest problems. Is, is, you know, one big thing of having this socioeconomic data is that it's had a chance to be reviewed. And personally, I don't feel that I've had a chance to review it. I don't know if all the commissioners here have had a chance to look at this and actually study this economic, economic data. Uh, because like, you know, Mary had said as well, you know, and she quoted the uh, uh. You know, the National Park Service's mission. And I think it's worth actually reading that out real quick while I'm here. You know, uh, uh, the National Park Service preserves unimpaired the natural and cultural resources and values of the national park system. Enjoyment, education, and inspiration of this and future generations, right? That's their mission, right? When I'm sitting up here at this dais, my mission is to protect the Grand County citizens. And the data that I've seen is that there is a decline, right, in our economy. Uh, I've looked at the Kensey Gardner report and we show that we have got the greatest decrease in visitor spending. Right? In the state of Utah. So that's compared to apple, apples to apples. We are performing less than anybody else inside of Utah. Uh, when you take these numbers right here, you know, you say, oh, it's twelve percent. We throw that around. Uh, another thing that I've been studying that I kind of talked about is, you know, the housing plan. Um, that's great data in it. And one of the things that it says is the average person here in Grand County makes forty thousand dollars a year. Okay, if you take twelve percent out of that forty thousand dollars, it comes down to thirty-three thousand dollars. And I've lived both thirty-three thousand dollars and forty thousand dollars. Let me tell you, there's a difference when you're living at thirty-three thousand dollars, forty thousand dollars. Um, you know, I can go off to, you know, a couple of different things here about, you know, about the reservation system. Um, but you know, I, I, I do want to commend the park as well because we are making progress, right? And that's, and that's where I really would like to focus on. You know, there is progress with the six months that we're seeing right here. Uh, we are seeing progress. Um, and, and I think that there is room for progress right there as well. And that's really. Where I would hope that this commission can try to focus on where we can find some progress. Try to make it so we can, we can accomplish both goals, right? Because I mean, I spent my entire adult life guiding trips in Arches National Park. Right? I want the visitor experience to be the best visitor experience possible, right? But I also want to figure out a way that it doesn't come at the expense of Grand County. I don't want to see those dips right there in our economy. So whatever we can do to work with the park, um, you know, and, 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 and we had talked about, you know, ways that would happen. I mean, if we could figure something like that out. You know, I would be, I would be, you know, uh, uh, um, you know, willing to maybe even to amend some of the letter. Um, but you know, as it currently stands, I just. I just have to say, you know, we, we, we can't accomplish both goals, right? It, it, it doesn't work for me, right? Because my job here, right, is to protect the citizens of Grand County. It's not, it's not to be, you know, in my other hat when I'm hat, uh, out guiding trips to where I'm protecting the park. Um, and I do, I, I'm an incredible steward at the park. You can ask Lena. I turn people in all the time. Um, I'm, I'm, I, I work hard to keep that park as pristine as possible out there. Um, yeah, yeah, what else did I have? Yeah, that's all I got.
So I, uh. Appreciate everything that the park's done. I was on the website earlier, seeing as the year rolled around and saw the changes and I love the video that's on there. I think it's awesome. Um, that was one of my huge concerns is that the education to the public just wasn't there. I mean, I'm out and I am out in our community every day, all day long. And I listen to people frustrated. I listen to our servers that are frustrated and our community that listen to tourists that are frustrated. And so I, I really appreciate that. And I think the biggest part of that letter and, you know, is that. We didn't want to see the current reservation system being permanent because there, there still needs to be work done and you've acknowledged that and. Um, and that is, that was the biggest concern is that we just don't want to have this reservation system and not continue to. Create more opportunities inside the park. So we have generations to come. We have people that don't even come back to Arches because they've seen the sixteen Arches, the big Arches, you know, and so they want to come back. If we got them more exhibits and more um, trails to other places, you know, they'll be like, oh, you know, there's, there's new places to go see, just like an amusement park. I mean, I know Arches isn't, but it is, you know, and, and so they put in new, new exhibits and people come back and they come back and they've had a good experience. And I think that a reservation system is a very important piece of that puzzle, but I don't think it's the only piece to create great visitor experiences. And that's where um, I feel about the reservation system, that it's not ready to be permanent. And I think that it needs to continue to be a pilot system. Um, until we figure out what we're, what we're doing and just continue to, to grow in the park.
It's still a pilot. It is still a pilot.
Uh, am I allowed, uh, Stephen, I should, am I allowed to make a substitute motion?
Uh, you could, you could, uh, you could table the current motion. You guys could vote on the motion. Um, yeah. You could just, you, you could do that. It would. It, it would require then voting on the subs- voting for the ability to do the substitute motion, then voting on that substitute motion. So you're going to have two votes regardless of the way you go. My thought on it.
Okay.
Chair, call for a vote if there's no further discussion. Discussion or a call for a vote? Okay, so we'll call for a vote then. On the discussion, on it, on the. Motion made by Marion, seconded by Trish to um.
To uh, uh, not pass. I didn't say it that way. I had another way of, I, I, I basically I said to not. You know, and I, I don't mind, you know, I think it needs to be definitely reworked, no matter what. If we sent a different letter of this, it needs to be reworked. Because I, I think what I'm hearing from Brian is they want to work with the park. They see that the, we want to work with the park. But that letter doesn't give that, it, it doesn't have that sense. It doesn't have that feel.
Well, let's vote on your motion then. All those in favor? All those opposed? All right, thank you. So that motion fails. Motion fails. Um, two in favor, Marion, Trish, and the other four against with shock abstaining, barbecuing, so. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yep.
Definitely to make the motion that we amend the letter there to, uh, to include our withdrawal of support to a permanent reservation system. Till such time that we can prove that the pilot is working, it does not affect the Grand County um, community. And that we can create a group that includes both federal, right, state and local people that can go ahead and affect genuine change.
I'll second.
I'm confused because it isn't, uh, it is not permanent.
We are, we are withdrawing our support of the permanent system, right? Until such time. That we can.
That doesn't make sense to me because how can we uh, oppose, withdraw support from something that hasn't happened?
What's that?
We don't have, it's, it's still a pilot. There, it's still being uh, worked on. So I guess I'm confused.
You're supporting a, a alternative right now. Currently as it stands, I would believe that our support is for alternative.
Chair, to clean this up a little bit, has there, has there been a motion made and seconded?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Motion seconded.
So mo- uh, there was a motion made by Commissioner Martinez to approve the letter, letter with additional edits seconded by Commissioner McCandless, correct? Yes, okay. And I, and I just want to make sure for the, uh, for the, uh, clerk auditor that the motion was clear enough to make the notes on it. Yeah, okay, so, okay. So any further discussion on that? I know Trish, you had something earlier.
Yeah, I don't understand inter myself. Um. It sounds like there's a little bit of confusion. So we are still in a pilot phase. Nothing is signed, nothing is permanent. At some point in the future, our current plan that we're still working on will go for a final signature, but that is not done yet. So there is opportunity while still supporting the current pilot to, or to continue to provide input. So the way that this works is that. We are continuing to meet with our constituents such as yourselves, uh, Amy, two, a couple of takeaways from this morning's meeting. Those are being incorporated into the draft plan, right? So we are still very much in the process of incorporating feedback. Once the plan is finalized, if, if today somebody decided to sign the plan and it was done. We can still do other types of planning, right? The, the plan, all the plan locks us into is having a reservation system as the way we manage visitor use. It doesn't lock us into. Whether or not we look at Willow Springs Road, whether or not we look at Utah Raptor Access, whether or not we look at bicycle paths. Those can all happen in the future. If we were to turn back the clock and go back to a day when there was not timed entry. Our staff, time and energy, myself included, and Amy and all of our staff out there in the field would be one hundred and ten percent focused on managing crowding. We would not have flexibility with the ability to plan for bike paths because all we would be doing is managing that crowding and the impacts of that crowding. So there is still room in the current process as it's moving forward for a lot of input and a lot of collaboration as we saw, as I think I evidenced this morning. And I hope that collaboration is able to continue as we move forward to perhaps some point in the future this coming. I'll leave it there.
Yeah, and I, I think that the way I understand Brian's motion is, is that we want to make sure. That this doesn't go permanent at this point, which you are assuring us that it isn't. And so. That I think with his motion to move this letter forward, just stating that, that we aren't in favor of this current. System going permanent without some. Um, amendments and feedback.
I'll leave it back to all of you.
So perhaps an easier, easier statement, and I'm, and I did my best to track the, the requested edition. You could just state in its current form instead of the, I mean, the other a- additional language seemed. Well, it, it's quite the, I think that, that you would make an affirmative requirement for the park to prove something that would be difficult, really difficult. To prove. And so you could state in its current form, that states the record that the county's position is in its current form. We don't support this. Now that maybe invites additional. Uh, additional conversations, but if you put it in a form where they have to prove that it doesn't have any economic impact. Then I, I don't know if that really encompasses what the, the commission's looking for, but it's not my, not my motion. And I agree. I think that that's a, a good way to do it in its current form. And it, I think that still leaves the. Plenty of room and opportunity for us to.
I'm going to amend my motion as it was just stated.
That's it. There has to be a, a motion to the, do that because technically your motion now that it's been seconded is, uh, up for discussion of the, the body's entire entirety. So we need a motion to amend it.
Or we could vote.
Yeah, you could vote it down and then you could re-vote.
Like we did before.
Okay, so then I'll call for a vote on it as it stands. That's probably easiest. So all those in favor of that, as the original request from Brian? Anyone else lost? And it's. Time to move forward to, to change his.
So, so then how many opposed to that motion?
Right. So all, all opposed. All opposed, that's it, Sam. So now we need to, that motion corrected. So six commissioners voting against the motion and one commissioner, uh, Commissioner Hatler accusing himself. Now back to the original.
And just to interject, yeah, you always want to call the vote, but you only have to name the commissioners who are in opposition. You don't need to.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So let's hear, uh, uh, give this a shot right here. Stephen, correct me if I'm wrong on this. Uh, so I moved to amend the letter to include our withdrawal of support. To the reservation system as it currently stands.
If that's what encompasses what you would like to do, I think that's cleaner.
I, I really would like to put it in there so and we can open this up for discussion. Uh, you know, the, uh, uh, um, the working group that kind of discusses finding those goals. Inside of that.
And I think that they've assured us that that's going to happen.
Okay, then yeah, yeah, then I'm fine with it, with the motion. Uh, 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 amending the letter to include withdrawals. Uh, to the reservation system.
I need you to second. All right, Mike, second. Oh, I was putting that. Motion that's made by Brian, seconded by Mike. That the letter will be restated to. But let me finish stating what you said here though. That the letter will be reworded to state that we are not in support of the reservation system going permanent as it currently is. Uh, Chair, who would you like to make those additional edits? Would you like the Commission Administrator's Office to do that? Are the Commissioners going to do that? I would think that the Commission Administrator working with Brian can make sure that those words cannot correct. So if there's any other discussion on this, this would be the time. Mary?
Yes, I, I, I think, I, 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 I'm concerned that it still comes across as that we don't support. Yes, I, I, I think, I, 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 I'm concerned that it still comes across as that we don't support what they're doing. And I think where they're trying to tweak it and they're trying to work through it and it's not permanent, that we should maintain our support because that carries a lot of weight when they're working with their federal partners. It's when they can come and say, the county and the city support what we're doing. That letter gives a sense. I mean, it, it's just, I would recommend if anything, if we wanted to table it and rewrite it so that it's saying what you want. Not table it, it would be postponed. Anyway, I, so I would like to make a po- a substitute motion that we postpone this item and rework the letter so it's stating what you're, what you're saying because I think what you're saying is good. But it's, it, I think when you say not supporting, that's all the person's going to hear.
So are we?
You need a second.
Right. We better get a second.
Mike, okay.
I'll second that.
Okay.
The motion is to postpone. That's the motion that's up for discussions. So now it should be conversation regarding the postponement.
The reason I'm seconding it, and it goes back to what I said originally, this should have worked in workshop.
Go ahead, Mike.
Uh, just stay my point. Don't love the current system. Thank you for working. Continue the on-working. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's call for a vote on this motion that Mary's made, the substitute motion to table this. Trish, second to that.
Postpone is to put it off to another day. Table means to bring it back on the table later.
So all those in favor as Mary has stated it?
Postpone.
All those opposed? So now we're back to.
Now you, you, you restate, motion fails with commissioners.
Motion failed with commissioners McGann and
My last name's Sadeen.
McCurdy, Martinez, McCandless, and Winfield.
With Commissioner Hadler and.
Commissioner Hadler accusing himself.
Excellent. So now you're back on the original motion, which is Commissioner Martinez's motion to um, adjust the language as it currently stands, not supporting as it currently stands.
Okay, so let's call for a vote on this one as stated. All those in favor? Those opposed? Okay, so opposed, Commissioner Trish. The most, motion passes, but two against Commissioner Hadeen and Commissioner McGann with Commissioner Hadler recusing himself.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you for your time, Lena. We really appreciate it. Okay, so we will go back to the top of the agenda. We've um, Scott, the true, we don't have any presentations today, do we? And so we are to department reports. None of those either. Or agency reports, somewhat of an agency report, but is Thompson Fire District still in?
Are we, okay. But are we presiding over that meeting? Okay, thank you.
So then on to general reports. We can start with commission member disclosures that are full disclosures now. I know that Jacques did his disclosure in the last one as well as Commissioner Martinez. So Mike, go ahead.
Uh, my wife works for, uh, Grand County Sheriff's Office.
Anybody else? Disclosures? Nothing, nothing. Okay, moving on. Elected official reports.
We, we usually do commission per.
Mission reports.
So then we'll start with you, Trish, if you'd like to.
Yeah, I just had one meeting on the nineteenth. We had a Gwissa meeting. And we appointed a new member to one of their boards. There's very, a lot of tendrils within Gwissa, and that was Preston Paxman. They are proposing a rate increase for tiers four, five, and six. And the goal of that is these are your highest water users. It, people that are using more than twenty thousand gallons per month, their, their goal is to really push those people towards water conservation. As far as the snow and soil report, um, soil report at ninety-five hundred, ninety-five seventy-eight. At, this was, yeah, December nineteenth with nine percent. Last year it was twenty percent. So as always, greatly concerned about precipitation and soil moisture. Um, that's about it. That's the only thing I have.
Holidays. Um, I, uh, yeah, so on the eighteenth, I, the, uh, Grand County Economic Development Department hosted a entourage from the government's Office of Economic Opportunity. It's a, Go, Goio is the acronym.
They always change it.
They do, they always change it. Anyway, that was a, that was a great, uh, visit. Um, we looked at a few different projects that that office has helped to fund. We went to a Royal Crossing and, and got a tour of that. And then we went over to the, uh, daycare facility at the Lutheran Church on four hundred North Street. And, um, Rob Walker gave us a tour of that facility, which has been, uh, greatly funded by, uh, Goio. And then we visited with the City of Moab, who, who showed us some of the, uh, projects that they've worked on there. And then we had, we had lunch with them and, and, and had a, a robust roundtable discussion with them after that. So that was a, I thought that was a great visit. It was really nice of them to come down and uh, continue to pay attention to Grand County and continue to fund us. Uh, they've, they, they're responsible for some, some really cool and necessary projects here. Uh, and then on the nineteenth, I was honored to give remarks at the, uh, Umtre, fifty million tons of um, of, of, uh, the pile moved. And, uh, that was great. We entertained a few dignitaries from the Department of Energy as well as from the contractor who is handling that. And, uh, and again, that's a, that's a, that's a massive milestone. It looks like there's only one million tons left to move, so I'm looking forward to next, um, year's ceremony. And other other than that, I, uh, just enjoyed the holidays and, and the break. We had a, we had a nice three-day break. So, thank you.
Uh, yes, before I give a report, I'd like to just make a statement. Uh, that I've gotten word that there has been some fair, some pretty strong language and threats towards the Kane Creek development and the people who work there. That is not okay. That's not okay in any situation. To be, to threaten breaks down communication. It stops people from trusting. It is, even if you disagree, it's just not okay to threaten. And I ask, I humbly ask anyone who is posting on social media or just spouting out at restaurants or such to please tone down your rhetoric. It doesn't serve anyone to speak to, about anyone in that situation. So, and there has also been some pretty derogatory things said about staff members in Grand County. And I am disappointed by the public who does that. And I humbly once again ask you to cease such hostile rhetoric. Uh, then on a positive note, I too went with, uh, Jacques. I was at Jacques when we went to uh, the, uh, turd, the things that Goad, uh, has.
Goio.
Goio.
Goio. I, that sounds so weird. Uh, has funded. And I also want to acknowledge Audrey Graham because she was one of the people who first got the, uh, childcare situation at the Lutheran Creek Church started. And visiting it was wonderful. It was so fun when the little kids would go, hi, when you walked in. It was just a beautiful atmosphere. So that was great. And that was a great uh, visit. I had a, a meeting with, uh, Economic Opportunity Board. We interviewed two candidates for positions. And we also, uh, uh, continued our work on bringing together, uh, our, uh, general plan and the Trail to Tomorrow. It's, it's very exciting that they're working very hard on that. And for future consideration, I would like the staff and, uh, perhaps, you know, I'd be willing to help the staff to move on finding which agencies and what group we should get together for a roundtable to discuss the problems with, uh, you know, the air, the, you know, the seat abroad, a forward to us. Paragliders, is that what they're called? Para, paramotors. Uh, it's, i- it is a serious problem. And she, that's probably the most serious thing that's happened, but we've had lots of complaints. And I think that's the end of my, my, I, other than I was at the fifteen million ton, and I was strong enough to lift that million ton and move it over.
Where, that, that traditionally lived right over there. Have they just not put it back yet?
So we gotta get. And see that there's only one million tons left.
Okay, and I don't know, I certainly haven't done it yet, but I want to welcome our new Commissioners Martinez McCandless here. And if either one of you have anything you wanna say, as far as I know, you haven't had any meetings really, other than Brian and I did meet with Lena today. Glad to hear anything that either one of you would like to report on.
Just like you guys, I was at the, uh, the Umtre, um, sorry, was at the Umtre, uh, little meeting there. And it was amazing to watch Mary move that million tons inside the little thing. I thought that was great. So, uh, um, yeah, and, and, and I also do really appreciate what you have to say there about protecting, uh, staff because that is of the utmost importance. Um, but things can turn away as, as never. Anyways, first day on the job, so thanks.
Yeah, I was at that as well, the Umtre. It was awesome. Um, I think on future considerations, we should definitely look at the camping ordinance, um, and just review that as well.
Yeah, thank you. And clearly it's my first day on the job here as well. And I apologize for the makeup, mix-ups and the name mispronunciation. Trish? And, um, I, I've got a few things. I, I would like to comment on Mary's too. We did, we jointly put together a press release that was sent to, um, I believe Andrew was the one who received that regarding the attacks on our staff and some of the posts that have been going on. I, I think that as elected officials, we're open to that. And we have to be open to it. We're up here. And whether we like to hear what people have to say about us sometimes, it's, um, even though it's hard to take, we've signed up for that. But to be going after our county staff, I, I don't see any reason or anything that there's any benefit to that. And it, it really lowers an individual to a pretty low status that would attack county staff. So I'd like to make that note and then move on. I too was there for the Umtre celebration. And, um, I think that Mary's put a lot of time and effort into that. Board, even though I don't think she lifted a million pounds, she certainly moved the pile over. And I, I appreciate all that's gone into that. That, that, that coming to a closure is, um, going to affect everybody. And we'll be interesting to see how that all turns out. I was also in board meeting at the airport board meeting last night. And that's, um, got a lot of different things going on there. Some discussions on reviewing and updating bylaws and a few other things as well. I think in advertising policy that we're gonna look at for the airport. Um, what else? You know, I was in a meeting also, and I think it's worth mentioning, a meeting with BLM and David Pals. And out of that meeting came some of the work that Commissioner Martinez and his staff has been doing to help a longtime county resident, Nick Hogan, who, um, fell ill. And I think they even found him wandering around up there. He had very nearly deceased. And so he was taken to the hospital in Grand Junction. And I think he's transferred now to Oregon. But now the horses and everything, that, that there's a big push. And Brian has been a big part of that. And I think it's just worth noting that most of us know Nick Hogan and have known him for a lot of years. I, I think it's commendable what Commissioner Martinez was doing up there. So that's, that's all I've got to. Okay, and so then I would like to move forward, Gabe, as to our other electeds. You got anything you'd like to report on?
Um, just real quick, as I didn't have min- y'all probably noticed that there aren't any minutes in the packet. I didn't get those done in time, but we'll be caught up at the next meeting here in January. Um, the only thing, um, that I guess would be worth mentioning is that, uh, the, um, you know, based on the last, um, you know, sort of letter and sort of conclusion that this commission came to, uh, in December with regards to the state auditor's findings, um, that the, um, they hold on, uh, revenues, property tax revenues and sales tax revenues has been lifted. And so Grand County is, has, has received, um, those revenues as, um, you know, that had been delayed. So just wanted to make sure everyone is aware of that or just sort of speak that out to the public. I'm not sure if that was, had been communicated through the holiday time. So just wanted to say that.
And I think we're all that day and glad that it's here and Mark, it's your turn as a.
Don't forget standing. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, uh, give appreciation to the, um, to Commissioner McGann and Commissioner Winfield and the Commissioners for, um, for putting together the statement that was released. Whenever things like that come up, um, it always requires, um, you know, concerning statements on Facebook. It always requires law enforcement to go look at those things. And I think, you know, every person in this, uh, you know, every person has a first amendment right. They have the ability to speak their mind. It's just taking it beyond, um, you know, great intelligent communications and going into threatening behavior is always really concerning. And so I appreciate the statement. I think staff appreciates that. And so I just wanna thank, uh, Commissioner McGann for leading the charge on that. Thank you. I don't, I don't have anything else to report.
All right. Now to our new admin, Mark, although he has had a few meetings under his belt while we're, um, getting up to speed here.
Commissioner, Commissioner, I just wanted to take this opportunity to welcome our two new Commissioners. Uh, and also to let you all know that I am looking forward to the work of the entire commission. Um, I think we have a dedicated group and, uh, looking for great things to, to come out of the upcoming times. Also wanted to thank, um, Gabe, and thank, uh, Stephen, along with Quinn and Alicia. They have been in the commission office. They have been very helpful. And everybody has been very welcoming, uh, including all of the other department heads. So I just wanted to, to express my appreciation to all of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate it.
I wanna throw one thing at you guys real quick. Uh, Ora is gonna apply for a hazard mitigation grant program funding for, so low water crossings, the, uh, pack creek, curbulate, low water crossings. And in order to apply for the grant, we need to Brooks Department to maintain it and fix it those. And Bill was gonna sign it. But it seems like it, it, there might be some possible. So I just wanna make sure you guys are aware of that. If, if, if Bill decides that as a chair before the grant is given to private grant application, right? They'll go and submit us to making those in the long term. So they're looking some funding on it. It's a theory. Uh, I talked to Phil and Ora. They have, we think it's best that the county chair, the department, then, videos to that. No objections.
And, and just for clarification, there, there isn't a requirement for a match? Or is there a possible at this time?
So far, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you.
If, if there is, I'll.
Well, I think I'd be glad to sign it unless somebody has something that they would be against it.
Sounds good.
Thanks, appreciate it. We, um, we appreciate her going after those grants. So, looking at our time here.
Got time.
What's that?
Oh, we got time before six o'clock.
Yeah, we've got time before our six o'clock citizen can be heard. So we can start in on the number one agenda item here. And that's the volunteer citizen appointment to the Noxious Weed Board. And, um, I will open it up for discussion and, uh, possible motion here.
Is, is he online to per, to, um, present that? She was on the agenda as the presenter.
Who what?
Izzy?
Seen her to.
Potentially, if she's not here, you could, I mean, you could approve it. You could, uh, move to next item. I don't know if she.
Or the, or the weeds.
Yeah, I've, I've got two. Do you wanna wait for her? Does somebody go and see if she's available?
I think Quinn's messaging her. So if you guys wanted to pass it momentarily, you could come back and.
Let's, let's pass it and come back to it. So the next one would be the assignment of the county commission re- representatives and liaisons to district and county boards, commissions, committees, and other agencies. And if. Somebody does, has no objection, I think we just start at the top of these and go down the list and, um. If there's two people that want them, we'll just have to vote and move on between those two boards to see who ends up with those. If there's any that we have multiple in alignment with and shocked, sure.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, that traditionally in the last two times or the last three or four times that I've been involved in this, we've, um.
Speed it up.
Yeah, to speed it up, we've given consideration to folks who are already on that board, if they wanna keep that board. Then I think that, that's a prerogative unless somebody else really wants to be on that board, in which case. We can, uh, we can have a discussion on that just to speed it up and we can go through the five who are already on boards, what, what they'd like to keep and then. And then individual commissioners might wanna pull those, I think that would be more expeditious and kind of in line with how we've done that in the past.
Or haven't we gone through, like Evans and, and, uh.
We're, right, going through the ones that are vacant right now from, uh.
Although I agree with, uh, the way it's been done in the past, I think we just start at the top of the list and work through them, I don't, I don't mind if anybody has some of these ones and. I'm not sure Bill, I guess, is the first one in the alphabet here, but I say, what if we just go down board by board and choose them?
No, I was just gonna say, I, I don't know if it matters, I mean, you guys could share the screen, I just wanna make sure all the commissioners are on the same, I think you guys are likely all on the same page, but.
Oh, I would also.
Uh, yeah, I think.
I, I would, I would say also, like, as, as far as. My thoughts on, on the boards that I'm currently on, there's some that I'd really like to keep, some that I'm, I'm not as, I don't care about as much, but I, but there's other boards that I'd be interested in, but I wouldn't be interested in. If, for example, um, I kept all mine, that I wouldn't have the capacity to take on another board, but if, for example, I. Lost three of my seven boards, then I would prefer to pick up another board or two, if that makes sense, and keeping track of them. That way, to me, it makes sense to, um, to kind of go through the ones that have been vacated first maybe and then the ones that are currently occupied and, and then. And then see where we're at, just, just a suggestion, that's, that'll, that'll be my preference.
I, and I'm fine for going through this if we wanna do them, I mean, we just, we can start with Trish over there on the site that she has and the boards that she's got and.
Thank you, Bill.
I guess that really takes us to starting the list at the bottom.
Yeah, just, you just wanna know the ones that I'm.
Oh, also, I think it would be helpful, we do have a spreadsheet, I was wondering as we fill this out, if someone, maybe Quinn or. Or whoever would be responsible for, for keeping track of the ones that are filled in real time so that we have a, um.
Alicia, can you, can you, uh, track this while we go through it?
Yeah, I've got it up and I'm following along. And I'll update it as we go.
Yeah, but, but you can't make, on that document, you can't make real time edits on it.
I can't make real time edits now, I can just edit on the spreadsheet that we've got that is also shared with all of the commissioners.
Okay.
Is, is there a way to share that spreadsheet with us, Alicia, that, or, uh, I don't know, whatever. Do whatever you think is better, cause you're, you're better at that time.
Um, yeah, hang on just a second, I think I can do that.
It's a Google Drive document.
Cause, cause she can't make changes on that in real time.
Yeah, here, give me just two secs and I'll get it up and go on the screen instead.
And while we're waiting, I, I just think that we need to be aware that there are some new commissioners and there's gonna be some boards that others are gonna want, so we'll just, as we come to those. We'll vote on them and move on.
We do have a lot of openings, cause we had two commissioners leave, so, so, yeah, there's that. Just tell me, Alicia, when you're ready.
Okay, Trish, go ahead.
So with the audit committee, that was Kevin, Bill and myself, and I'd be interested in staying on that, but that would open up a position, so. If I can stay, I'd like to stay, we're pretty, it's pretty new and so we're kind of like in our infant stages.
Right, and I know Brian wants to look at the second one and I know there's somebody in, interested in the other position as well there and I definitely would like to stay on that. So, I, I think it's up for a discussion, I do know that there is quite a bit of pushback. In the public for the remarks that were made in the commission meeting that were, that blamed the hotline citizen. And you and McGann were those two people that made that, so there's been some pushback against that.
Looking at the, looking at the bylaws, that audit committee isn't one of the things on that to protect the whistleblowers?
It is, one of the things on that is to protect the whistleblower and that's why I'm bringing that up, because I've had calls about it, so I, I think it would be an important one to bring somebody new on. And I think Brian and anybody else.
I mean, Kevin's place is open, so, okay, I guess, I, I'm sorry, I got.
So if there's anybody else that would like to be on that position, now would be the time to bring it up.
I, I'm already part of, uh, the audit committee for actually UAC, uh, I'm one of their members and I would love to be. Furthered into an audit committee, I, I, I really am not, uh, in favor of taking it dearly from Trish, but. Uh, I already do it.
Okay, um, I'd like to stay on the mop, I, I feel like I'm kind of the water guru and would like to stay in that position where I'm tracking. So I, I'm not there yet.
Can I just clarify real quick, um, is, so Trish is not keeping that one or she is?
No, Mike wants that position, so, Mike.
Take that position, Brian and Bill.
Mike, Brian, Bill.
And now we're up to the watershed partnership, which Trish would like to keep.
Okay.
There's, there's some discussion elsewhere. Move forward, then we go to the special service water district Wissa. Brian has shared that he would like to chair or be a liaison to that.
I've been on that board for four years, it's a pretty intense board, um, there's a lot of knowledge that goes along with that board, I'd like to stay on that board.
Well, so let's take a vote.
Can I, can I make a comment?
Sure.
I, I think Trish has done a great job on that board, um, I'd definitely be supportive of her staying on that board with her institutional knowledge and continued work on that. Um, I think as far as the audit committee goes too, I, I think in the past, we did a really good job of, even though. The ideological split on the commission in the past was five to two, of any board that there was, uh, two or three folks on, uh, the, the last commission. I think did a great job of getting someone from each of those kind of ide- ideological divides involved. Uh, so I think that is something that this new commission would do well to consider, uh, so I'm. I'm a little bit disappointed in that, but that's, whatever, that's fine, but I think.
And I think it should be totally fine if you wanted to submit your name for it, Jacque, I'm just bringing to attention.
No, I understand that, yeah.
Whistleblowers were not protected and publicly chastised, there's some pushback.
I, I don't, to me, that doesn't disqualify one of this, uh.
So, if you'd like that, I think Mike would be more than willing to give it up and I see your point definitely in both sides being represented there.
Let me, uh, let me look and see how the rest of the boards land and if I have the capacity to get on that, um, and then I, maybe Mike and I could, yeah, just horse trading.
Horse trading, yeah.
But, but I do, I would, uh, very much support Trish in that role and, um.
I will say that, I don't know if I've ever missed a, missed a Wissa meeting, uh, they used to be twice a month, now they're once a month, but they're quite long. And we do have representatives, there are certain boards within that, that we, for example, were failed to get a forum the last time, cause our city representative didn't show up, I'm not. Picking on him, but, but it is extremely important, that board is extremely important, you cannot miss meetings and I don't.
Well, and I appreciate where you're coming from, I know there was a lot of controversy on that board over the last year and I think there's some value in, um, just, let's. Take a vote, move forward, if Brian and.
One quick comment is, uh, I guess the reason I see Trish being good on that board is because she's, she has without. On her own, on her own time, done those, how many workshops on water? Four workshops, I mean, her knowledge of water and the situation with the water in, uh, this valley is. Way above mine and I think that makes her a valued member of that board.
I'd also say, Wissa, I think is one of those boards that, um, it's, it's an open and public meeting, so it, like, you could attend if you want or I could attend, certainly.
Yeah, do we, do we pass the watershed partnership?
No, she, we, Trish.
Oh, okay, sorry.
No, yeah, right.
We're out to the special service water district board of Wissa and if we want to take a vote, let's start with a vote for Trish, all those in favor? Those opposed? Mr. McCurdy?
I, this is kind of a, I don't think you need to call this bill, it's just a, this is just like.
Put Brian's name in that one and then we will go to the planning commission, Trish.
Uh, Bill, I know that you wanted this last time, do you still feel that way?
Um, I'm totally fine with it, the way it is, I'm, I'm not gonna.
Okay, great, I mean, it is, it's a big question, I think you wanted it last time, then I'd be willing to give it to you if you wanted it, but if not, I'd be glad to stay. And we're in a deep transition period.
I have no complaints or nothing, no reason to worry about it, so I'm, I'm totally supportive of you having that. And then we have the mosquito.
Yep, I'm good with staying on that.
I would actually like that one, uh, just because my district is like mosquito central and so I thought it would be good, but I don't wanna take it from you, I just. I mean, if I was the choice between the cemetery board that Evan had and like mosquito abatement, I would, I would like that one, but if you, if it's near and dear.
Like a kid, I've been on that board, I know the board really well, I know the superintendent really, I'm in the director and I'd like to stay.
I, I'm, I'm okay for you to keep it, I just, I thought it fits really well with my, my constituents, so.
I get those mosquitoes too, I'm over on Fourth North and, uh.
Yeah, it's bad, you know, and I, I would love to learn more about it, um, maybe next year.
That's, that's also one that has a public meeting, so you're, what, you were absolutely able to attend those too.
Okay, moving up the list then to the library board, Trish.
I'm fine with staying.
Okay, any takers? No? Okay, we are up to the second Wissa.
They're all kind of, they're all kind of together, yeah.
They're all connected, so we'll leave that one, moving up to the conservation district.
So that would be Brian on that one.
Right, right. Yeah. So, Brian on the Grand Water and Sewer Service Agency and now we are up to the conservation district.
I'd really like to stay, I feel like that's kind of my bag, but it's wicked. So, I'd like to, if you guys are okay with that.
Yep. Haven't heard any dissent, Children's Justice Center. Okay. Um, let's see, we are up to the transportation SSD board, Mike.
I'd like to remain, uh, and I. Yeah.
To speed it up, do we have anybody that wants to sign up for any of the ones that Mike currently has his name on, that would be the special events. The recreation SSD, OSTA advisory, criminal justice coordinating council, Canyonlands Natural History. Association, that was Mike. Okay, I'm sorry.
I don't wanna challenge Mike if Mike wants to keep that, but if I do end up short for some reason, that's one that I might be interested in. But, but I don't wanna, if you like it, I'm, I'm totally. Sure, no, no worries, Mike, I'm, I'm not gonna take it from you, but if I end up, if I end up short, then maybe we can talk.
Yeah, and I, I get, same goes for me, if scheduling applies, I would like to work through that, okay.
Okay, so we're tracking, so for Alicia, everything, Mike's keeping everything but the top, uh, the Canyonlands Natural History Association is Mike or Jacques.
And Mike, de- I definitely defer to Mike.
Sure, but, yeah, just to keep it, cause we're not gonna remember if we walk away from it, thanks for calling.
Okay, so then the next one is the housing task force, housing task force interlocal.
So we're up to Mike, Mike, Mike and myself and then mine, uh, I'd like, can I jump ahead, cause, uh. We had talked about how you were interested in doing the public health at the Four Corners. Because you're in Green River.
On Tuesdays, mhm, so the mental health board for Four Corners and the public health board, the health department.
The question I have, and I've talked to him because, uh, it's, cause sometimes they go to Zoom for one reason or another with that. Will you be able to do Zoom?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah, that's no issue, yeah, I can do Zoom, I have a, a laptop for work that has.
I got a little nervous, I thought, what if she has to drive home to get?
Yeah, no, I, I'll be fine either way with Zoom or.
Okay, so.
Well, I'm, so I'm happy letting, you know, and that would be very convenient. Yeah, cause she's already there and I have to drive.
Then be Melody.
So that's good.
And let's go back to the housing task force interlocal. Mary or Mike, are we just leaving that or where am I at on there?
I was a temporary there, but. Uh, and not to pick and choose, Mary, uh, on your, your list here, but I'd like to become more, uh, in the housing, uh, task force interlocal. Instead of just a, it, it is a public meeting that we met last time.
And you could, and, uh, you could, you know, any, it's such an interesting word, if you attend three times consecutively. You become a voting member, so, you know, it's like, uh.
It's like the motorized trail committee.
Yeah, so it's like, uh, so, you know, that's why I thought it worked really well when it was Mike or Mary, so.
And I'm fine leaving it that way?
Yeah, I have a reason not to. Attending meetings.
Okay, and then USU Moab Dean's Advisory, Mary?
I'm, I enjoy that.
Okay, anybody, nobody? Okay, travel council advisory board. Mary and Brian here, do, do you wanna give that up, Mary, or do you take it to a vote?
No, I, I'm fine giving that up.
Okay.
You know, I've been on it for a lot of years.
Catch that, Alicia?
And, and.
That was Brian, right?
Yes, it was.
Got it.
So. Mary, the solid waste management SSDs.
I'll stay on that unless somebody wants it.
Okay, we're leaving Mary on the solid waste. Next one would be, we'll have Hailings Project Steering Committee, Mary. And I would like to join Mary on that one.
Oh. You know, anybody's welcome to come.
Right.
Yeah, no, I, you know.
Maybe make that a Mary and a Bill if possible, I just see some value with the connections with the federal and the. Offices that I've had there, so if I could, I'd like to join you on that.
You, you can come anytime, I, I wanna continue being chair. Of the, of the, of the steering committee.
Well, that's probably in the bylaws when they pick the chair and make.
No, the bylaws is, in the bylaws, it's the commissioner. And then what we had to change a few years ago is it was really confusing, which would be great if you came. Because before, if I had to miss or say the person that was there before me had to miss, then another commissioner had to come and take over and then they knew nothing about what was going on. And it was really awkward, so we changed the bylaws so that now. A person that's on the, on the steering committee can be, but then if, if you were, you and I were going, then when I, if I couldn't attend a meeting. You would be the shoe in for chair.
Okay, I'm fine with that, let's move up to the housing authority, authority board, HOSU.
You can have it.
I was like, I'd like to pick that one up and.
And you're fine with that, Mary?
Uh, I have a real, I work really closely with Ben and I know he requested that I was on it. Uh, so, uh, that would be my own, you know, I, I feel like I owe it to him to at least ask him. Because he called and asked me to be on that board, so, yeah, I have some.
That's at the discretion of the commission.
I know it is, I'm saying that's why I'm struggling letting it go.
Yeah, yeah, totally understand.
And so I have, I, I would prefer.
Ask Steven. Uh, it's not a current conflict, uh, previously I worked with HOSU, uh, eleven years ago to get in the house.
Okay.
I just.
But yeah, he, he, if he really would, he could have it, because, uh, it's, it's a non-voting. You're just, you're just there to, to report back what they say, so that, that's fine, you could have it.
Okay, that one switched to Mike, Alicia, and moving on, we are at the homeless coordinating committee, Mary?
Anyone interested, it's all on Zoom, which is kind of nice, cause you just, you can take, you know, wherever you are, you can do it. But anyway, I've been doing it, so, uh, or since took it over from you sometime, so. If somebody wants it, they can have it, but I'm fine keeping it.
Okay, and then, then we will move on to the economic development. Of Utah, Corporation of Utah.
I would, I'd be interested in the economic development advisory board, which I think would incorporate that economic development corporation of Utah. Is that, are those together?
Uh, well, you could have like the Utah one, they're not together.
Oh, they're not together?
But I wanna keep the Economic Opportu- uh, Development Board, because I'm in the middle of helping. We're working really hard on a document right now. We've, we've had two meetings so far. We're gonna have another meeting. And, and I'm really vested in seeing that project through.
Would you be willing to switch it afterwards?
If I saw that project through, then, then I would be happy to that, fill up it.
Mel, if you want it bad enough, let's just call for a vote. Let's move along.
Well, I'd be okay for her to finish her project, but I want it like, as soon as that's finished, is that a? Your, your document. All come to the meetings.
Well, I, I would really like to keep it. I've been on that. It's, uh, when the board, one of the board that I, probably the board that I look forward to going to. And it's probably the only one that I get excited when I go, oh, good, it's an economic opportunity. Cause they're just, it's just, I just enjoy it. And I would, you know, in two years, I'm gonna be gone. And, you know, you know, I would like to finish my tenure on that very much, because it's.
One, uh, I was just gonna note, we have had Commissioners in the past, like mid-year through, uh, with Commissioner McCurdy picked up the CJCC Board. So I don't, I don't think it's unheard of if the, the Commissioners wanted to, uh, to. Yeah, to switch, to switch.
I'll just go to the meetings. I mean, they're open meetings and the Commission, and it's not a voting spot. So I just, I'm very interested in just the economic development and just continuing with that, so.
Really need more. I really love it.
So can we just write Mel and Mary on there?
We'll put Mary and Mel on that one, Alicia.
And, uh, yeah.
Okay, we are up to.
Oh, and it's an interesting board.
Let's see, we wanna do, let's skip what Kevin had and move to Jacques.
So we still had a CCP.
What did I miss?
You missed CC, uh, CCP, yeah, Candy Country Partnership.
Candy Country Partnership, anyone want that?
Sorry, can I interrupt real quick? The Economic Development Corporation of Utah, that one stayed with Mary, right?
I wanna take that one, Melody.
That one went to Melody. Okay, thank you.
And then the next one up, the Economic Development Advisory Board will be Mary Mel, and then we are Canyon Country Partnership.
I do want the CCP, Mary, but I won't take it from you, cause I know you like it. I've been before too.
You want it?
I really, I'd like that. You're sure?
You, weren't you the Chair this year, Mary? Or is that less?
You, you'd have to be Chair.
Do you have, no, you don't have to be Chair, do you?
Yeah.
Wouldn't they, wouldn't they re-vote for somebody if the, uh?
I don't wanna change one.
Okay, I got some others though. You can take it over to your, yeah, two years, you can have it.
And Chair, just noting that we are at the end of that Commissioner, and it's perfectly six o'clock, so if we wanted to handle the citizens to be heard, instead of waiting the next bit. I don't know if that is the Chair's discretion.
What was, what was decided on the CCP?
Trish.
Uh, no, it was Mary gonna.
No, sorry, Mary.
I'm gonna keep it for two years.
Okay.
I'm gonna keep it for two years.
Okay, and so we're gonna take a break from the list, Alicia, for a little bit here, and we will open up the six o'clock Citizens to Be Heard.
Okay.
At this point, and so do we have anybody in the lobby here, or the room that would like to come to Citizens to Be Heard? Um, come up, introduce yourself.
Um, just online.
You have to sit down.
Gotta sit down and take the one with the mic.
Online, we can't hear you guys, so.
I wonder what's happening.
Bring your mics and phones. I don't know if we're having an.
I don't.
Online can't hear you. Actually, Jacques, everybody can hear you.
I'm used to speaking into my mic, cause I'm used to being in the chair, but yeah, it's, it is a, it is a matter of speaking into your mic. And I'll, these are flexible for the new chairs. I'll, if I lean back, but you can, you can move it, and that's, it is, you don't, you don't think of it. Again, I, I was in the chair position, so I spoke probably more than anybody for the last few years, so I got used to it. You'll get used to it, but, but I think that's the issue.
Yeah, it's like one inch from your mouth.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for that info.
Okay, after the Citizens to Be Heard.
Yes, agreed.
So is there anybody else that would like to make a comment in the lobby? I'm sorry, there's a hand before you. Please come up, take your seat and introduce yourself.
Is this good?
Yes, great.
I'm, uh, actually going down here. Brink County Commission, my name is Oscar Nehaus, and I'm a fifteen-year-old resident of Brink County. I know you all care, all care a lot about our county. I'm here with frustrations toward Agenda Item Eight, withdrawing the support for the Augustus timed entry system. Now, while the increase in visitation is upsetting, it must be remembered that we have to always manage our mental concerns with the mental wellbeing of our visitors, workers, and residents. On the subject of our residents, think about traffic on Highway One Ninety-One, northbound, before the Augustus timed entry system. I have memories of looking out the window and seeing the sea line stretch onto the highway during many days of peak season back then. Now, consider a visitor's perspective. At this point in, there are more hurdles to access the park. But because that, lines to arches are actually managed, beyond lines, there's less people entering the park. This amount of chaos for visiting the park is a lot less. Imagine just as a visitor tirelessly looking for your parking and dealing with all these high, highly crowded hikes. This was a better-known reality for the timed entry system, and this issue has really been mitigated by that. Simply put, it's a better experience in Augustus now than it was before, specifically because of the system. Alongside this, think about people staffing and managing the park, the Rangers, the gift shop. When fewer people come to the park, they can work efficiently and without nearly the amount of stress as before. To reiterate though, because less people are going to the park, that does not directly correlate to more participation. In fact, if some visits are crowded and unfun arches, who knows if they'd wanna come back? Now, with this being said, a way I could see for is through advertising more of us ready for visitors and not, and and not taking away from our registration for a reservation system, instead of properly advertising our needs. And that's bringing more people to our, might otherwise be wary. Actually, we all know the story of going, going, talking to someone, a stranger, and they ask where you're from. You say Moab. They're like, ah, I used to like that place, too crowded now. That's a big issue. To conclude, both figures have a very diligent strategy, whether it be tabling or no. Thank you so much.
Oscar, I wanna commend you for coming forward. That's excellent that you put that together.
Outstanding wordsmith, excellent.
Really appreciate it, and, um, I know that we already handled Agenda Item Number Eight, so you could go back and look at that on YouTube if you wanted to, but just for a brief recap, why there was some discussion made with the Superintendent today. And we are moving forward in a very productive way there, I feel. So thank you for your time. Anybody else? Yep, please come forward.
Brittany. Uh, anyway, I just wanted to tell you, I appreciate every one of you guys. Um, there's gonna be a lot of, I would say, everyone's gonna have to probably be a little more flexible with their thought processes. And, um, I did appreciate Commissioner McGann's and, um, Commissioner Windhills' uh, statement in the paper, and I just hope that that continues forward on, on this, this commission specifically. Um, because it is important for the community to work together. Um, and then also not necessarily say a whistleblower is terrible. Those types of things are not what I would expect from a leadership position. And, um, I also want to just reiterate the fact that, um, our community still is struggling. So, um, if you guys could see the late payments that we see a lot, or, um, the people that are struggling in general. I just was told by, um, I had a, a person that her husband was deported, and so now she's trying to figure out how to, um, be able to raise three children by herself. So people are struggling. You guys have a lot of, uh, change about you that you can, that can happen right here. So I do wanna encourage you guys to maybe work together and work with that city and try to get, um, some affordability going. Uh, but transparency, that, that would be my, my hope out of this commission, and I know I emailed you guys today. But good luck to Melody and Brian. I'm excited that you guys are there. All right, take care.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else in the room? Uh, we do have somebody online, so let's go. Andrea. Feel free to speak up, Andrea, if you can see us or hear us. Is she on mute? I think you're on mute, Andrea. We, we still don't hear you. We, we still can't hear you, Andrea. I'm sorry.
Can you hear me?
There we go. Thank you very much. Yes, we do.
My, sorry, my phone was being slow, I guess. Um, I just wanted to, I guess, second Oscar. I heard his, um, what he had to say, and it was, that was really nice. Um, but yeah, just about the, the reservations system. It's very easy and just makes the experience, uh, a lot less chaotic and doable. And the trails and parking are not as overcrowded, and we will definitely keep coming as long as the system is in place. And that's pretty much what I had, what I wanted to say.
Thank you, Andrea. We appreciate your comments. Is there anybody else online that would like to speak? Jeff, would you like to speak, or are you just watching? You're on mute, Jeff.
I just barely joined, so I don't know where you guys are exactly. I was, I was chiming in to possibly discuss the, the, um, uh, the purchase of the home in my neighborhood from the, um, Children's Justice Center. But like I said, unfortunately, I just barely got on, and I don't even know where you are, so I, I, I would like to comment at that point, but I don't know where you're at, so.
Okay, but we're in the six o'clock Citizens to Be Heard, which would be the appropriate time for you, Jeff. We do not have the availability for you to comment when we're discussing the items.
It's not on the agenda. There's no, there's no purchase of.
On the agenda. It was a closed session item.
Okay, so there's no, there's no comments being taken on that then?
No, there's not.
Okay, all right, thank you so much.
Anybody else online that would like to comment?
It may have been a closed session item, or it may not have been.
Right, thank you. Buddy, anybody else in the lobby like to come forward? So then at six ten PM, I will close the second six o'clock Citizens to Be Hurt session and move forward. And in light of the fact that we have Izzy here, I would like to withhold any further action on the list of boards and bring the Volunteer Citizen Appointment up and allow Izzy to come forward, help us present that.
S- so the Chair's moving to item number one?
Item number one.
Yeah, will you restate the titles, just so folks?
Volunteer Citizen Appointment to the Noxious Weed Board.
Hi, I'm Izzy, the Noxious Weeds Department. Um, I'm here to present on our volunteer appointment for a weed board. Three applications, I'll make board qualified. Board members. Baker Living and Agriculture. It's kind of a vague term, but only two of the. So two applicants.
Okay, Jacques.
I was gonna make a motion. Uh, I would move to approve the appointment of Ben Menard to serve on the Noxious Weed Board with term expiring on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. And I'll say it now.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Hadler and seconded by Commissioner Hadeen. We can open it up for comment. Brian?
Yeah, um, so yeah, I was, uh, uh, looking through the bylaws on this, and you know, the, one of the things it first says is, you know, these bylaws are supposed to be looked at every single year. Um, I'm pretty sure that they haven't been, because the chapter that we quote right here, uh, Utah Code Title Four, um, Chapter Four Seventeen dash four is not correct. So it took me a little while to actually find the correct code of where we can do this, and this was, I, I believe amended in twenty twenty-one. Trying to see here where that is right there. Yeah, and so, I'm sorry, it was in twenty nineteen, so it was even before this right here. But it does say that they need, that, uh, uh, two of the members shall be farmers or ranchers, whose primary source of income is derived from production agriculture. And, you know, and, and while I understood that the, uh, uh, you know, that the youth garden would be considered inside of that, um, I just kinda carried that a little bit further and started reaching out to the board members. I'm like, well, who is, who, who does kinda carry this? Does Sina Howar, is she considered, you know, inside of that? Are we, are we kinda stretching that out this way? Are we trying to stretch it out that way? And one of my conversations actually led to, I'm sorry, but I'm forgetting his name. The Chair of the Board is. Jeremy Jespin, and then there is another vice chair, the Vice Chair.
Vice Chair is Tim Hicks.
Tim Hicks, and, and, and I'm sorry, yeah, it's, it'd been a little bit. But when I talked to Tim Hicks, he'd said that he's really been trying hard for the last twenty years to get somebody who, who, who actually owns a ranch, um, to get on that board. Um, and while, you know, uh, the Paul Holyoke right there, you know, I, I looked at his application, and it didn't say much. It was like spray weeds and farming, right? I'm like, wow, that's, you know, that, that's not really that, you know, that well of a detailed, uh, um, you know, uh, uh, resume as compared to Ben Menard, you know, whose resume was really quite outstanding. Um, you know, it really does seem like that might be something that would be really valuable to your board right there. Um, someone who does own a farm and their primary duties are ranching and spraying weeds. Um, that was, that was one thing. And then the second thing is, is I'd just like to recommend that, that, you know, that the bylaws are, are pretty short on this. Um, it doesn't really have a purpose or anything like that. It doesn't even list the requirements for the board members. Um, and I think that, that, that those should be rewritten right there.
And, and that's something, Alicia and I can take care of the, the bylaw. We'll, we're more than happy to, um, to update the bylaws, and I know, um, Alicia and I have been working at trying to update bylaws, but that's something we can, we can definitely take care of in the future.
I, I think.
No, no. Go ahead, Mike. Can we table this till bylaws are amended?
Then they won't have board members.
I don't know what their, I don't know what their board member, you guys have a total of five? Right, five all day, and right now you have four filled, one vacancy, right?
Yes.
Kevin, Commissioner Walker, former Commissioner, I keep calling Commissioner.
Yes.
Citizen, uh, uh, Citizen Walker, so you have, you, you're, you're one short, and then after tonight, you'll be back to four. Um, it's not a requi- it's not a requirement to do the bylaws before you do the appointment. Um, that's.
It does say here in the state code as well, that this board can be anywhere between three and five members as well.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it is five members. It's just the, now, like, I, I served on Thompson, and all last year, we only had four of the five, and it just made a problem, like meeting quorum sometimes, and, and just not having the votes. We only have a five-person board. Every vote's important. So no, it is, it is, it is a, it's a hassle. It's, it's, it's a disadvantage to have a board that's short members. I think, I think traditionally, I mean, it sounds like, uh, Mr. Menard, I don't know personally. I know the Youth Garden Project does a lot of great work, and he has a great resume. I, traditionally, we follow the lead of the board on these, um, ninety-nine percent of the time. I'm very comfortable with, uh, Mr. Menard's, um, his, his resume. When is the next board member up? And, and who is it? Maybe, maybe there's a board member up within a year that, you know, someone like Paul Holyoke might wanna get on, or, yeah, I don't know.
I, I'd like to comment too here, you know, in the state code, that it's got a, two members of the board shall be farmers or ranchers, whose primary source of income is derived from production of agriculture. And I, I guess I question the youth garden as being a primary source of income for an individual, um, from ranching and farming. So I know that they do a lot of good over there, and they certainly have, um, an impact on the youth in the community, but I'm, I'm a little curious why the rancher or farmer, whichever he qualifies for, probably both, Mr. Holyoke was passed over.
Um, to clarify, I did check with the state, um, I forget his full title.
The Grand Bitters.
His name is Aaron Eager. Um, he is kind of the authority for the boards to process it, and I did check specifically whether.
You're doing fine.
Um, I did clarify with him whether this would count as someone who's positioned, and he said yes. Um, he was mostly referencing the third part of that, which is, he's the members.
To answer, uh, Commissioner Hadler's question, Jordan Nesbit, if I'm saying the last name correctly, his term, uh, ends at the end. Sorry, her, sorry, uh, is, uh, the end of this year, and Tim Hicks is the end of this year.
So we have two coming up at the end of this year?
Correct.
Okay.
So, yeah.
I'll just make one comment, I'm on the Conservation District, just, and I, I know you guys know this, there are very few individuals in this county that their entire income comes from ranching or farming, I get, I can think of one rancher that actually lives, makes it, and that's Dee Taylor. Other ones, you know, they might have allotments in Grand County, but they don't actually live in Grand County, so, so just know that it's, it's not that easy to find somebody that their entire income comes from ranching or farming in this county.
Well, then I, I do believe Mr. Holyoke fits that pretty closely as well, so, that, that was why I thought.
Yeah, there's a. It's pretty slim.
Commission, I mean, the commission has options, you pick one of the two applicants, uh, you could delay it if you wanted to, I just don't. Yeah, you do have a motion before you, but I just didn't want to think that you had to go rewrite the, redo the bylaws, um.
Yeah, thanks, Steve.
So, do we want to take a vote on this then?
I'm happy to take a vote on it.
Okay, let's call for a vote then on the motion that was made by.
I made the motion, yeah.
Right, Commissioner Hadler and seconded by Commissioner Hadeen, correct? Point Ben, Ben Menard, yes. So, all those in favor? Opposed? And Commissioner Martinez.
Yeah, I abstain, I'd like to move the bylaws up, but keep on that project.
And Commissioner, I'm pretty abstaining. Okay, I, I missed that, thank you. Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Yep, thank you, appreciate you coming in, short notice or late notice, whatever we gave you. And so if we could then, go back to the list of Commissioner Appointments to the Boards. And we were moving up the list and gonna jump up, Alicia, are you with us again?
Yep, I just showed my screen.
Okay, we're gonna move up to the ones that Commissioner Hadler has, and we'll come back and fill in the empty ones.
Right, you did have, I mean, I, poetically, you did have, uh, the weed board next.
Oh, wait, oh, because Kevin, it was, uh, Kevin was vacant.
Well, since I just stuck my neck out about that, I, I think I'd like to jump on the weed board.
Do we have anybody else that wants that?
Yeah, I think that's great, right?
Yeah. Okay, so we did, um, fill one of Kevin's, the weed board, Alicia, with Commissioner Martinez.
Got it.
Okay, and we will go up to those that Jacques currently holds, we'll start with, it looks like the first one, as we move up the chart, is Trail Mix.
Yeah, and I, I'd, I'd very much like to hang on to that one, I've been involved with Trail Mix well before my time on the commission, and I, I appreciate that, um, that, that committee a lot, so that's one I would like to hang on to.
You did a good job there, and it is open.
Yeah, it is open to, yeah, any, anyone also, anyone who attends, yeah, it's similar to some of the other ones where you attend, I don't know, three to five or something like that, yeah.
I don't hear anybody that wants to dispute that, we'll move up to the Thompson SSD Water Board.
Thompson, I, I very much appreciate being on Thompson, I've been on there for two and a half years, um, I, I'd be happy to continue with that one, that one is a board that requires a significant amount of involvement as well as travel, you have to go up to Thompson, um, at least once a month and sometimes more, there's special, uh, things that you'll meet up there for, so I would, I would, I would enjoy hanging on to that, but if someone wants it, I wouldn't be opposed if they have the capacity to put the time in on Thompson, it's a community that deserves a lot of, um, a lot of attention, and, and, so, I just put it there.
It's extremely important that the commissioner be at those meetings.
It really is, yeah.
And their technology, their technology, not, well, I was gonna say challenged, but I was trying to correct.
Yeah, it's hard to zoom in, you're, the, the chair of that one uses his cellphone, and, and I've done that only when I've been traveling out of the state, otherwise, otherwise I travel up to Thompson, and, and it is a.
Very archaic, I was just gonna warn.
No, of course, of course, and it's, it's Bill and, and Stephen have both been there, but it's, it's a two-hour meeting every, every time, at least.
So, I, I don't think there's anybody that's.
Okay.
That's after that one. I, I will say that.
No, I'm, I'm happy.
I, I have filled in on that board for Jacques.
That's right, Bill has.
The, with the ongoing replat work that's going on at Thompson, which I've been.
Yes.
Part of, why I think that's a good opportunity, if you do need something, I'm very familiar.
Thanks, Bill, and, and if you did want to take that over, I know you're one of the people who's, who's there, but, but I'm happy to continue with that, I'm comfortable with that board, I know those guys well, so.
Yeah, I'm, and I think that if you need something, I'm more than willing to fill in just with my.
Thank you.
Time there, so then we'll move up to the Star Hall.
So Star, that, that has been defunct for, or it, we haven't met since my very first year on the commission on that, I don't know if it even still exists, to be perfectly honest.
Okay.
Just in case, okay.
It would be good to appoint someone just in case, is what Quinn said. People have been complaining that they can't hear us online.
Okay.
Yeah, and it does exist, it's just that, um, there's, the way it's written out, there's not a need for them to meet very often, and I think it's pretty seldom that they do need to.
Yeah, again, I met with them the very first year I was on, we had one meeting, and since then we haven't, I'd be, again, I'd be, I, I enjoy Star Hall, I'd be happy to stick to that, but if someone else would prefer to be on that, I'd be happy to give it up also.
It sounds like an easy one to make.
It's pretty easy.
Okay, so we will move up to the Museum of Moab.
That's another one that I'm, I'm very involved in, I, 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 I really like being on that board, so I would, I would, I would love to continue being on.
Okay, moving up, we are to the Local Emergency Planning Committee.
That's, I, I like that, um, that you work a lot with Cora, that you go to a lot of the, um, the meetings that she arranges, that, that other commissioners are invited to, as well as people from the city. Um, and that's what a lot of that is, as well as, you had to check some boxes, you have to do a, a few online things. So, I, that's another one that I'd be happy to continue as, but if someone else would like to do that, I would, I would, I would totally defer, and I'd, I'd be happy to give that up as well.
I think that sounds like nobody's after it, let's move on to the Historical Preservation Commission.
Another one that I, that I very much enjoy being on, I, I, I'm a big student of history, and, and I, I love, I love that board, I like, I like that one a lot.
Okay, no takers, we're moving on to the Film Commission Committee, are you keeping up with me there, Alicia, I hope?
So far.
So the Film Commission Committee I've been on since the beginning, and when I first got on in twenty twenty one, the Film Commission was not under the county, if you guys remember, that came into the county in twenty twenty two, so since that's come into the county, there, the Film Commission Committee hasn't met, and I don't know if that's defunct now, or if that's necessary, but because the Film Commission is part of the Economic Development Department, I don't, I'm, I, my, I don't think that that's actually a thing anymore, but, but I could be wrong. Again, the last time that met was twenty twenty one.
And so do you want to leave your name on it in case?
I'm, I'm fine, I'm fine with that, or if someone else is into that, then that's.
I know, if you want to put all my name on those ones, it's all.
I'm pat, I'm padding my resume with the.
Okay, maybe we look into that one to see if it needs to be.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good idea, yep. Yes, yeah, then we had, we had quarterly meetings my first year. Right, yeah.
Okay, so, moving on to Community Renewable Energy Board?
So that one, Bill, if you remember, that's the one we just, uh, we just kind of renewed, uh, that was Sarah Stocks, she's on that, and then.
Oh, yes.
I, I had it for a brief second, but then Alisa from Planning and Zoning took over that. And then when Alisa left is when that created a vacancy, and, and I, I'd been gone, that was, that was staff, so that's when the Commissioner from, I believe it was, uh, Summit County contacted you and asked if someone from the county would be on that board. And, um, so I haven't been involved in that one either.
Is, is it something that we want to look at, if Alicia was doing it, if nobody else wants it?
I'm not sure if that's better, Alisa was into that, and she thought it was, at the time, thought it was better that staff handled that? That staff was better prepared?
It's.
It might be something we asked. The zoning administrator.
Yes, that, that was Alisa's, um, take, but Amy's might be different, so, but I think it would be worth asking Amy her thoughts on that.
And if they do want a commissioner, I'd be happy to be on it.
Okay, that, and I'd be, I'd be happy to give that to you, Melody.
Okay, put Mel down for right now, and.
Great, we'll check with.
And look into it.
Okay.
Maybe that's a conversation between Mel and the zoning administrator.
Yep.
Okay, on to the Chamber of Commerce.
Chamber, Chamber's another one, like, like Thompson, so I, I've enjoyed being on the Chamber for the last four years, it's, that's a great board, it's another board that requires considerable amount of involvement.
I do attend all their.
Yeah, yeah.
Events, you know, and things like that.
Uh, and I'm o- I'm okay with that, Brian, it, it is, so, you, you're on for eight thirty tomorrow morning.
Me too. Right on.
And it's gonna be, and it's gonna be an interesting meeting, uh, I can, if you want, I can, I can get you up to speed after the meeting just a little bit, but, uh, but no, the Chamber's great, I, and, and if that's gonna be the case, I, I absolutely loved my time on the Chamber, I made some great connections there. I appreciate the Chamber so much, um, and, and, uh, I think I'm turning it over, it, it's gonna be in good hands, so, so, yeah.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So the next one is the Transportation Plan Stakeholders Group, Southeastern Utah Region, and that was previously Evan and Kevin, so I.
And I, I'm happy to have my name on there.
I'll jump on that as well.
Okay, that fine with everybody else? Okay, Alicia, that one's gonna go to Mel and Brian?
Hey.
Okay, thank you, and then we are, I guess we're working through, let's see, we probably want to jump up and work through mine as the only commissioner left, and then we'll go back and fill in the empty spots if.
That sounds great, Bill, yep.
Okay, so we will move to the Budget Advisory Board, that was previously Bill and Kevin.
But would that, it's, I was curious as to whether that would have positions for potentially three commissioners instead of two? But it doesn't matter, I mean, I'm.
Bylaws state two.
They do, okay.
We would have to amend the bylaws.
Yeah, I, I was just curious, I'm not.
And I, and I'm wondering, and I'm not, I'm not ju- I'm not trying to throw you out, Bill, but I'm just wondering, like, I would be, you, you've been on it for one or two years, and, and I just wonder if it's not a good thing to have different commissioners on there, just so that they have that experience, like, I haven't been on it yet. Um, just because I think it would give us a more holistic view, anyways, just an idea, I would like to be on that, um, and I'm not trying to kick you off, but I, I just wonder if not, we shouldn't all rotate through that, um, yeah, through, throughout our terms.
Yeah, I, um, I'm mixed about it, I'm pretty involved in that budget, I would say I have my head in the budget more than any other commissioner on the, on here currently, so that, that has been a huge push and issue of mine, so to give that up at this point, I think I would, you know, I would, I would struggle a little bit, yeah.
Right.
So.
And I, going back to my previous comments about the, uh, the Audit Committee, I think that's another one that, that it, it's, it's well-served by having uh, someone from each side of, of what I'd call our ideological divide on that, on that committee also.
Maybe that's one that we look at the bylaws and see if we need to open or.
Sure.
Put three of us on there.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm totally available with that.
Brian wants it as well, so.
Yeah, I'd be psyched, I'd just like to, you know, know more about that entire process.
Yeah.
Okay, did you catch that, Alicia?
So we're gonna put Bill, Brian, and Trish pending bylaw.
Correct.
Iteration.
They put to, to make sure two people were there more than, to make sure somebody showed up.
Yeah.
Cause, you know, it's an open public meeting, so we could all go.
So, Utah Association of Counties is next, that's mine, and I am currently the Vice Chair on that, and likely next year would move to the Chair, but that's of course always up to a vote, but if somebody was dying to take over their involvement with the Utah Association of Counties, it is, um, not recommended to zoom in, it's something that you need to attend the meetings, and it usually requires travel occasionally, they're in Salt Lake, but they can be St. George to get all over. So if, if somebody wants it, let's have the discussion, if not, I would, um, prefer to retain that.
That's yours. Okay, this is a shameless plug to, uh, participate in County Day on Hill, et cetera.
Yes.
Especially to new, new commissioners.
There, there's plenty of opportunities for all of us to participate in UAC events, and, and, and I certainly have in the past, and encourage anyone to.
And, and new commissioners and, and all alike, uh, you can all vote on items, and just, and, just a reminder, there are seven commissioners, that makes it unique, you can all individually vote when you go up on the Hill and have an opportunity to be heard on, and they go through like lightning round of bills, so just that's.
Yeah, that's, it's seven, um, excuse me, that's the one where everybody has the opportunity to vote, it's at ten o'clock on Thursday, and it's usually in the Olmsted Room. And it is quick, it's, you can zoom in, I never have, but there'd be no way I could follow it, sometimes they.
It's hard even when you're there.
Fifteen seconds, boom, 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 so you've got to be pretty quick on that one, but everybody's welcome. But we will move on, the next two are really connected, the Triparite Board really, um, oversees the Tana Foundation, um, which is, helps people that have problems with their utility bills, and then the SEU ALG, which is another board that I am the Chair on this year, and I'm also having been nominated to the CIB Board, I represent the SEU ALG to the CIB, which is over the four counties. So, that, that one would be pretty hard to give up there, it, it would take a.
Bill, I'm.
Arm wrestle.
Yeah, I, oh, yeah, no, no, is there room for someone to join and, uh, 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 on those meetings, or no?
Yep, totally, they're always welcome to join, they, they encourage it for sure.
Okay, most likely.
Um, we are up to the Motorized Trail Committee then.
I'd like to take that, if nobody wants it, no?
Um, I'm currently on there, if you're fine with it, I.
Okay with that, yeah, okay, cool.
You got that one, Alicia?
Got it.
Okay, and the next one is a catastrophic wildfire, wildfire initiative from the Governor's Office. And it's one similar to Jacques's, that's as needed, um, I think in two years that I've been on there so far, I think I've had three meetings, and they're usually related around when there's a fairly large fire, and all the ones I've been involved with are out by the state line, so it's, it's more my involvement and participation was with Trish somewhat, and it's really when we were moving the Moab Valley Fire Forward, they were part of the negotiations somewhat. We were in Moab Valley Fire, and we had way more meetings over that than I've ever had with this one. So it, it's, if somebody wanted it, I, I'm not gonna stand in the way, but it's a very limited board. No takers, okay, Arches SSD, Bill, and that actually switched over, at least my list shows, Bill, that was my.
Switched over to me?
And.
But has been more than a defunct board, and we need to get back on it, uh.
I'll take, I'll take the challenge, I'll see if I can't get that board back working.
Great, done.
Any, anybody else? Okay, moving on to the Airport Board, Bill, that's another one that I'm really in the middle of working out there that I'd like to keep. Certainly somebody's willing to join if they want to get involved in it.
I would be interested in the Airport Board. What are you guys in the middle of, like, is it a big, kind of, anyways?
Yeah, we're scheduling a retreat, and, um, I want to say that's coming up in March, I don't remember the exact date, and putting together lists, we're working on the the, um, oh, what are the initials, ALP, the Airport Plan? I, I don't remember them all, but, but yeah, that one's pretty in-depth, and I, I've been struggling giving that up, there's too much involvement in that, we've got solar going on out there, and really, that's I have an airplane parked out there as well, so that's, that's part of my drive there, is to be a part of that airport.
While we're on the subject of that solar, I, I, on, on the subcommittees, I was thinking maybe, I was thinking about the solar, and, uh, bringing that back onto one of those, I know that those conversations kind of ceased, and I, I've, uh, had conversations with, with John Knight, who is, who is one of our advisors on that, I think, uh, I think it'd be fun to get this talk going again, but that, that's totally aside.
Um, can we vote on the Airport Board?
Sure, I'm welcome to vote, you, um, let's make it, all those in favor of, um, Trisha Dean on the Airport Board?
Support Trish.
Um. So, we don't really need to move forward with it, unless you would like, we can. move forward with it unless you would like. We can have a vote, but I I'm gonna retain that one. So that leaves us dropping back down, I believe, Alicia, to the Federal Agencies Liaison.
You also have all of Evans.
All of Evans? Right, well, I was I'm.
Because going back to.
Oh, okay. I went back to the bottom. My bad. That's.
That's okay. I'm following.
Okay, Federal Agencies Liaison, and I know that I thought there's room for a couple of us there. I definitely would like to participate, but we have to.
I'm gonna I'm gonna advocate for myself, and here's why. Cause I have a couple degrees in natural resource management. I teach national, national, uh, two classes at USU in natural resource management, and I really feel like the best candidate for the job. And I rarely you know, pluck my feathers, but I really think I'm the best person for this job.
I agree. I'm usually pretty comfortable, but I do have longstanding relationships with our federal uh, partners as well. So.
Why don't we just make up both of them? But what we have to do, so there's two participating there.
That sounds great.
It's a liaison position. Right, yeah.
And that moves us to the Council on Aging.
Evan?
That was Kevin.
Oh, Kevin, we're back to Kevin. Okay. I'm off.
Any takers?
Second Monday every other month. Not a big commitment.
Tracking also schedules on the side there. Trying to. Yeah, I'm I'm keeping track of my schedule.
You mean you mean Glenn thinks you're scheduled?
Well, no, for each individual commissioner to make sure that they don't trigger a conflict with their schedules.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
So if if at the end, each individual commissioner, I bet we can get Alicia to resort them pursuant to names, and then just make sure we don't have conflict.
Sure, I can do that.
Okay.
Nobody want to sign up for Council on Aging?
Do you wanna see? I think we could. I mean, so the bylaws say that the Chair can choose the person for that, but I think it's worth uh, putting that on a list and and doing it last, so everyone can see where they're at. Maybe someone will. Maybe someone's very light with their assignments. Might wanna pick it up.
Okay, so then we will move up Alicia to the Sand Flat Stewardship Committee Committee that Evan had.
I'll take that.
I I was gonna say I'd like to to.
I hardly have I hardly have anything yet, and it was Evan. So if I can't take anybody else's, I'll take his. At least nobody.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, then we will move to the.
So is that Melody or Jacques?
Yeah, it's Melody. I I would, I I would, I'd I'd like that too, but I'll 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 defer.
Okay, I mean, if you wanna call for a vote or whatever, I don't mind either way. So then moving on to Emergency Medical Services SSD, another one that Evan had.
I would like that one.
Okay, sounds like one that Evan, that was one of them. He was very involved in that board.
Yeah, being it being a past EMT, I think it's gonna be really interesting.
Okay, Cemetery Maintenance District Board was another one of.
Did they change that to every other month?
To which one?
Cemetery. I thought he said they were, but I don't.
If they did, I wasn't aware.
But it probably was wishful hope we're not Gavin's part.
Yeah, could be, but we can confirm too.
Uh, the web the website currently says. The website currently says second Tuesday of each month at six P M.
Okay.
But it wouldn't be that hard to change it. I can't imagine. If somebody wanted to to get on that board and change the bylaws, I know that we did that on the Arches SSD, trying to make it easier to get those people to the board.
And then it still didn't work.
And it still didn't work, but. Are you wanting that one, Mary?
No.
Okay.
Sorry, which one are we on?
Cemetery.
Down at down at the bottom.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, so it's the Cemetery Maintenance.
It's a taxing entity, just a fun fact.
That's right, it is. Yeah.
Okay, do we wanna leave that one and come back to it after people look at their schedule? Canyonlands Healthcare SSD Board?
That that one, uh, Evan took that one because it kinda went along with uh, with EMS, if I remember it, because they divide the tax on, you know, that that wasn't half percent or one percent, half percent. Yeah.
Okay.
You want that one? Okay, so that one goes to Mel, Alicia?
Hey.
And let's see, Building Codes Board of Appeals.
That hardly ever meets.
I'll I'll take that one as needed if nobody else wants it. Okay, that one's Bill.
Got it.
You can say something.
Just wait for you to introduce it.
Okay, um, this next one would be the Boundary Commission that Evan had.
It seldom it seldom meets. It's the entity that meets every once in a blue moon.
It's usually related to annexation. Yeah, I I'd be happy to. I I actually find that stuff kinda fascinating, so we have to take that one.
Okay, I I would have as well, but I'm not. I don't need.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Again, it's just I think it's interesting, and I I think it meets once a year.
That one goes to Jacques.
Hey.
And the Arches Hotspot Region Coordinating Committee. And I don't see anywhere that he meets.
What? I think it's I think the hotspot money's been spent, hasn't it? I think it's spent. It was years ago we got it. I think it's been allocated.
Can we check on that one, Alicia, and see if we can make it defunct?
Sure.
And remove it? We'll leave that one open? That takes us back to which two? The Council on Aging and where else are?
So did you want me to resort this real quick?
Yeah, if you could resort it by the the Commissioner names, I think that'd be super helpful for all the Commissioners, and then perhaps share the link with the Commissioners so that they get access to it on their laptops.
Sure.
To which two? No, I'm sorry, Council on Aging and Cemetery?
Um, is that it? I was questioning what the second one was, so it.
Yeah, it was it was.
I'll take the Cemetery Board.
Oh, wait. Okay. Trish will take that one?
Okay, then that leaves Council on Aging Board.
I'll take it. I'm the youngest person on the board.
That's that's fitting.
It's actually a pretty fun board, Melody.
Oh, oh, my goodness.
It's a fun. It's a fun group of people over there at the center.
Okay, I just have to rearrange my schedule for that one, but I will.
That's great. I was gonna say, if we could point it to. I don't know.
I don't have a minute, though.
But, okay, so we have them all filled, right?
Yep.
Anything else on this that you need, Alicia?
No, I'll just go ahead. If you guys are good with this, then I'll go ahead and resort it and send it back out, just so you know what boards you're on, and then I'll start working on the things that or we can in our office. I should say we work on those ones that uh, had questions or comments on them.
I just wanna let everyone know, uh, me and Jacques talked here. I I really want our wanna work towards the Audit Committee. If it fails, uh, my biggest concern is uh, scheduling. So if that fails the scheduling, I'm gonna switch to Jacques, just so everyone knows.
That that was the only thing I was gonna recommend is perhaps sorting this, making sure all the schedules fit so that we can just address that now instead of later.
Yeah.
And I never know my schedule, so I'll figure that out.
No, that fits. And again, I'd I'd speak again to that, to having members represented from from both sides, and I would, I I think I think giving up the the Chamber frees up some time for me to to be able to take on that. I think I would um, prefer to to be on that board and.
And that's that's the Audit Committee?
That's right.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna update it real quick.
Just to email with all the Commissioners, so if you go on, look at your individual names, just make sure you don't have.
Yes, thank you.
And I think even if we do, we can work those out, just right? We don't don't need to work on that right now or do we?
Trish wants to deal with it.
We have a lot. Let's go. We have a lot on the agenda. I'd say look at it and if you have a problem.
I like that. Let's go. Okay, where are we at? Um, sure, that is the next one, correct?
Three, within item three. No, no, you're on item two still. On two.
Oh, yeah, that's the subcommittees here. I'll share my screen again.
Now, we'd we'd next move to item three, and you just announced it.
Okay, so then I will move us to item three, which is the Assignment of County Commission Subcommittees. And I'm looking for the list that she sent out.
Right here.
Five, six, seven, eight, nine, nine.
Okay, so let's see. We'll start. Let's start at the bottom on this one, because I know Jacques and I are on the top.
Yeah, yeah. And just, you know, thinking about this, I just wanted to make maybe a possible record uh, recommendation. I think it would be great if we had three people on each one of these subcommittees right here, um, and that we kinda set a date on a a time and uh, uh, that we have some goals um, to have these resolutions kinda made. I think that the reason for these subcommittees was that these are all time sensitive um, types of issues. I know that, you know, housing, you know, the organizational structure, flooding mitigation, these are all things that that we campaigned on, or at least that I campaigned on, and I'd like to make sure that I'm, you know, we're making progress. So, you know, whatever we, you know, set up, I think that three commissioners would be really nice, and I think it also would be really nice if we set, you know, that by the next meeting that we'll have met, it's set some goals and a timeline for how we're gonna proceed.
Good suggestion. Do staff. Do we wanna wait? Mr. Hadler, because as these are all gonna require three, I think that would be advisable. Okay, let's let's do that. So we are gonna hold on on three and move to five, Consideration of South Van Pelt Road Vacation, and we have Bill Jackson online to help us with that.
Yeah, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yep, we hear you loud and clear. Thank you, Bill.
Okay, good day. Uh, first, congratulations to the new new Commissioners. Welcome aboard. Uh, tonight, we're talking about a vacation or an abandonment of a county road right of way. This road is called Van Pelt Road, uh, County Road number two thirty-three. Uh, the Utah State Code allows this to happen. Uh, a couple of codes I'll just reference real quick is seventeen twenty-seven A dash uh, two oh eight and seventy-two dash three dash one oh eight. And it kinda outlines the uh, the processes to 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 uh, fulfill this uh, petition. And so uh, right now, tonight, we have a petition from a a property owner in uh, near Professor Valley. Palladium is the property owner's name. Uh, they lease it to Canyonlands Field Institute. Uh, I think it's a forty acre lot and without going into great detail, they they have fulfilled what the petition, the state statutes require and submitted it. Uh, they note, uh, put it on notice, uh, uh, you know, for a public hearing, which has been fulfilled. This is kinda the second part of that. Uh, I think we'll have another opportunity for public comment and then commission to vote on it. And uh, I'd entertain any questions you have at this time.
Yes, we're working on a public hearing.
So we've already gone to public hearings, so this is a vote here to um, approve the vacation or abandonment of that road.
Correct. It was a sample motion within the Agenda summary.
And my quick question before, Bill, this, your recommendation was to go ahead with the uh, vacation of this? Vacating.
Bill, did you hear Mike's question?
Yeah, I can. I'm having a little trouble on my end, maybe, but.
No, it's probably me with next to the uh, microphone.
Yeah, I think some of it's me as well.
Your recommendation uh, was to follow uh, the vacating of this?
Well, I I I don't really have a recommendation. It's not gonna uh, affect the the Road Department or myself one a- at all. I think the public needs to know what's happening, and if there's been no public comment, then I I suppose that uh, the Commission would need to to uh, make that call and make that vote on it. Um, I will say that this is an RS two four seven seven road, which to many folks may not uh, you know, might not uh, uh, mean much, but it it's just a road that has been around a long time and uh, but it does just go in. It's just about point three miles of a of a county road. Um, which equates to right around seventeen hundred feet. Uh, it doesn't block off any access to anybody else. It just goes right to uh, that forty acre parcel uh, uh, where Canyonlands Field Institute is. And if you read their their write-up or read the background information on the uh, on the Agenda summary, it indicates their motive and their driving force is safety for the children. So folks aren't driving up in there with just anytime they want, you know, day and night. Apparently, they're getting traffic up in there, and it's just a dead end.
Okay, Bill, I've got several with questions, so we'll go. We'll start with Trish first.
I have a question. I have a motion. I wanna make a motion.
Oh. Wow.
Is that okay?
Sure.
I move I move to approve an ordinance vacating the portion of South Van Pelt Road, number two thirty-three, Grand County B Road, located through real property, known as parcel number zero six zero dash C C B F dash zero zero one zero.
Second. Okay, so motion made to approve vacating of that by Trish and seconded by Mel. And well, they both did. Honestly, I saw her footage, so. Um. So I'll I'll move. Is there any other discussion we'd like to have on that, or should we move for a vote? Okay, all those in favor? That passes unanimously, Bill. We're moving on to the next item.
Okay, thank you all. Have a good evening.
Yep, appreciate your time. Back to item three.
Thanks, Carla.
And so we will move back to three. This has been a seesaw tonight. Or a teeter daughter, however we wanna look at it. Assignments of County Commission Subcommittees. And Jacques, we held off on this one.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Appreciate you. Yeah.
So that because um, Commissioner Martinez felt that it was important that we have three on each one of these, and that we set some kind of timelines, and that that took place while you were gone, and so we moved to wait until you came back.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate it. Okay, so so what you guys decided was that there'd be three Commissioners on each one of the subcommittees in the uh, in the Agenda?
Well, that was suggested, so.
So, okay.
Not nobody required to take a vote on it. Unless there's somebody opposed, I say that's what we move forward.
I I'm certainly not opposed. I I think I think it's kind of a case by case basis. For example, you know, let's we'll start with the first in the Spanish Valley Bike Path kinda Subcommittee, and it's a bit of an ad hoc committee. Bill and I have been holding that down. I I think it'd be fine if a third Commissioner was on there, but I certainly don't think it's necessary.
Yeah, and it meets very, very seldom. But yes, Mike?
I just think with bike paths and others, uh, it really ties into some of my like my transportation special Transportation Special Service District uh, Board, and I I'd like to pick up the third spot, but I don't wanna take the spot for it.
Okay, sure.
Now, anybody else have feelings that want it? Then I say that we um, on that one, Alicia, we're gonna go Bill, Jacques, and Mike.
Hey.
And then the next one on the list, and I think that we need to delete this one, or that's gonna be my suggestion, the facilities and move it into the organizational structure. To which will eliminate one on the list there.
Just absorb it.
And so let's let's just, we'll get, we'll go to litigation next.
I think I think that's a typo. I think it's supposed to be legislation, correct?
Whoops.
Legislative committee. It's not a litigation committee.
Okay, that one's a typo. That's just me.
It is. That was me.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, and that was that one was the one that we've uh, kinda, again, but these are all subcommittees. They're kinda ad hoc, that we put that together. We we're kinda the ones drive the bus on our, yeah, with we're working with our our lobbyist, Cody Stewart. We're uh, working on issues of of legislation. So that's gonna be important during the legislative session coming up. And I I I do really enjoy that and enjoy working with our lobbyist and spending time up there, so I would I would enjoy.
I think we can have as many as we want on this, too. The more people up there, the better.
Well, of course.
Couldn't have a subcommittee meeting.
That's right, because you couldn't have. You'd have to have it.
I also think Cody is a great guy, and I think it is easier for him if there's a couple of few Commissioners to kinda touch base with as opposed to having everyone. And he's he's he'd be he works for the county, so he'd be fine with taking a call from anybody. Anyone should have access to Cody, but um, but but that's uh, I I think it I think it is a little less confusing if there's if there's a few point people.
So new Commissioners want a spot on there? I mean, I'd like to retain my spot. I spend an awful lot of time up at the state legislature, so that that would leave Mary, or you said on that one?
I I I'm I'm busy. Whoever.
I, I, I'm busy, whoever, in some ways, I think that'd be better for someone that's going to be here.
And it certainly doesn't preclude anybody from, from going.
It doesn't keep you from lobbying and keeping you from going up there and keeping you, and you can call up Cody and ask for help. I mean, I, I will still probably stay very active, but.
Right.
Okay, so, so that's fine then? You guys are all right with that? You're on it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, addition to there, um. The staff involved, what's the SS stand for?
Probably should have been a CA, but yeah.
Um, in legislation.
Yeah.
Uh, not to put more work on you, we could keep us all involved on that one. Bill, Mark, too.
Yeah, I think that legislative committee, it is important, I think, to, to, to tie in the, the attorney as well as the administration. It's always important.
I agree.
Wouldn't we want Mark or administration to attend all of these subcommittees?
Good luck.
You're assigned that.
So it's in it, in it, yeah.
Just to keep us on task.
And even, even Alicia, yeah. Or at least until we get things figured out, and then, you know, assign a staff.
So then we will move on to flood mitigation.
Oh, sorry, guys. Who was the final on that, of the three commissioners?
Uh, Jacques, Bill, and Melody.
Okay.
Like to be on flood mitigation.
Yeah, and I think that one was currently Mary, Trish, and Bill.
Yeah.
They've done that, so. I, I mean, I'm willing to stay on it unless somebody else wants it, but Trish and Bill at this point, anybody, any other takers?
I would, I would be willing to go on flooding mitigation.
There was some flooding in your neighborhood, too.
My, no, it did, went high water where I'm at, but at my house, but not in my.
Okay, so did you catch that? The third would then be Melody.
So we've got Trish, Bill, and Melody?
Trish, Bill, and Melody.
Okay. And then staff on that one, I think there's a multitude of staff involved in that.
There is a multitude of staff in that, especially both bills and.
We'll try to straighten out who all that is involved in that, too, and get that added.
We, I, we have an item in the consent agenda surrounding flooding tonight. Which we'll read through later, but that's that NRCS.
Yeah.
Application for out in Commissioner Hadeen's neighborhood. And then, the next one on the list, it looks like TRT EMS.
I don't think it was TRT they meant. They meant that's tax, you know, that's official service tax. Not, not, not transient room tax, but what's that called, the?
The one, the half a percent that we've opted into, where we were talking about potentially opting into the whole one percent. That's split currently fifty-fifty between EMS and healthcare.
Correct, and that's something the sheriff's been emailing us about.
Okay, that's.
That's the one I.
I didn't hear you.
I think that's.
I didn't hear you today.
It's a different one. I think that's, I think, I think they could be approached holistically. The other one the sheriff was referring to is one that we actually don't have to go through, chief of taxation on, and we, and we can just opt.
And the rural healthcare, we have to go take it to a ballot, correct? If we want to increase.
Yes, I believe so.
And I think I already ballot, you know, I, I want to see, you know, so yes, I want to, and I, who, yeah. To work, we'd end up working with the chair of the. Sorry, I keep doing the chair of the, uh, uh, EMS and the chair of the, uh. Healthcare, healthcare, yes, please.
Seems like Melody is being on those boards would probably be a no-brainer for that.
So do we want to name it though, just the tax committee, or does somebody else have a suggestion? But I think we want to.
Find out, we could find out what the actual name is. Um, I just put tax split for now, but we can, we can, I'll make a note here to find out what the. What the name of that tax is.
No, that's fine. Um, you're ahead of me. I appreciate that. So then, Mary has her interest here. Who else wants to be a part of that?
I will.
Melody. Anybody else? Any other takers? So let's just leave it at two at this point, unless we feel like we need a third on there.
Cause we'll have others on the committee. Well, and, yeah, we'll have others on the committee.
Okay, moving on, we are to the housing subcommittee.
I would be interested in that, the sense that I'm on planning and. And been working, we're starting to generate a lot of ideas about, uh, affordable housing.
I have, I have the historical knowledge. And was very instrumental in getting, uh, a Royal Crossing up and going. And, and on the Housing Task Force, I, so I think that would be a good committee for me.
I'd like to jump on. I think that I have some new fresh ideas to bring to the table.
And so we have.
Outside of conflict, I am the only one here that's putting houses on the ground, so I'd really like to be. Part of the committee.
So, housing subcommittee, we have four options available currently. Brian, Mary, Trish, Mike.
Well, I, I can, they, I, I, that's too many, so I, I'll, I'll go off. And I could just do it through Housing Task Force, and I will communicate to, uh, people on that committee when I learn from the Housing Task Force. So they can go forward.
I don't foresee any conflicts, but if any conflicts do come up, I will refer to Mary to fill in my shoes.
Okay, moving on. Did you get that one? Yes, you did. Organizational structure. I definitely would like to be a part of this one.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be, I'd be on that. What, what are we, when we're talking about the organizational structure, I forget what the impetus for organizing that. Uh, subcommittee was.
Well, it was, and that's why I recommended moving the facilities down into this. They're basically the same thing. But that's back when we had the study done, and then it kind of. Mallory's, um, departure.
Okay.
And so that's what it, it's all around.
So, so talking about, talking about the organizational structure as it, as it stands and potentially. And potentially changing it, right?
So, Bill, Brian, and Jacques on that one, Alicia?
Okay, and then we're getting rid of the facilities one?
Yes, yeah, I think that they. Just the name, it, it could go under either name, I guess. The next one is Economic Development and Travel Council. Would you like to be involved in that?
I, I would too.
Understand that one.
Right, we have the two committees. What is, what, how did the subcommittee overlap with the actual committees?
I don't understand what subcommittee is.
You don't understand what subcommittee?
No, what's that one is?
Well, it's revolving around the economic development and the travel council.
I think, I think where Mary's confusion lies, and mine also, is that we have, we have two functioning boards that, uh, that serve that purpose.
Know what the purpose of the subcommittee, what's their job? What are they supposed to accomplish?
I think there was some discussion around the fact that would be a good opportunity to look at what's going on there budget-wise and everything else. That we've got concerns with from sixteen to twenty-three to the TRT, there's all kinds of involvement there that.
And that's why I was mentioning, beginning there, that with the suggestion, that we come, we meet prior to this, and then we come back this morning with the resolution of what those duties are.
And timely.
Yep.
So, who, who else has an interest in this? Brian and Melody? Anybody else?
I'll get on it sometime.
Okay, Mary. Brian, Melody, and Mary.
Hey.
And then, review of policies and procedures of the governing body. Um, I definitely would like to be on that one. I think that trying to update that from the council to commission and clean that up.
I'd be, I'd be willing to work with you on that, Bill.
Okay, anybody else?
Do you want a third?
I'm not a commissioner, but, um, Chrissy Hoffine and I have discussed, uh, that we would love to help, um. Provide updates and shift it, because originally it does look at the council form of government shifting into the commission form of government, and it's something I've.
I think it, no, I think it'd be essential to have you guys involved.
I don't see the county attorney on a bunch of these.
Sure.
Well, I, that, that's the only one I, I mean, the, the rest of them are driving policy positions, but this, I think, we could, we can clean up some suggestions. The, the difficulty is going to be is, I don't know if you guys want us to give first crack at it, or if you guys want to, or how we want to do that.
Maybe coming up with just a list of, so, so I see this as, you know, you know how many times we've sat here and been like, we really need to change that policy? For example, on the, as, as we're the, yeah, exactly, Bill. No, I get it. So, so I think, I, I, I mean, looking back, I can remember at least a dozen situations. But I can't remember the specifics on more than maybe three or four.
I've emailed it to the commission much times.
So, so I think, I think, if you want to, if we want to start with your list, I think that'd be fantastic, and then we could go through that and, and treat it in that sense.
We have a third, I know Bill and Jacques.
Um, I think that you guys will be good. I think if you, I, I mean, I'm happy to be on that one, because I can, I can go through that fast, but I don't know if.
Yeah, I'm good. There were two.
More people sometimes. Yeah, and like the, you know, just the bylaws for the commission itself, the fifty-page document that we, we went to at training. I mean, it needs.
But definitely changing certain, certain policies, that, you know, like, like the ones where, with, with the, not the Board of Equalization, but, I mean, some of that. And then the, yeah, some of that stuff, and also, um, uh, each HR, where we're the appeal board to HR, that's got to change, things like that are.
I've, I have, um, I have asked Bart, um, Bart's firm to look at that. That's something that.
That's great.
I've talked with Quinn about in the past, about adjusting or looking at what additional options are, and I'd bring that back to you guys to see if that's what you want to change in the employee handbook.
Awesome, Stephen. Thank you. Yep.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, so we are done with that item?
So I've got Bill and Jacques so far on that, and then the attorney's office.
That's where we left it off at. Alicia was just Bill and Jacques. If we need help, I will recruit somebody else.
And then I believe Brian mentioned another subcommittee earlier in the meeting. I just can't remember what he said he wanted.
I, I think he, that it's on here.
Okay.
We've discussed everything that he mentioned, I believe.
Okay, cool. I just want to make sure we didn't miss somebody.
Okay. All right, so we will move on to one that I'm most likely to butcher the name here.
Isn't that.
Motivation.
Whoever, whoever came up with that.
Okay, we'll go with that. Motivations Training Contract for Dispatch Services, and this has Jenny Swenson.
I'm going to gender review. I even said, that's got to be a typo.
No, it's, it's.
I, I know it's not. No, it's not a typo.
It's an awful name of a company. I reviewed the contract, and it made me very disappointed in naming companies. Um, but this is a contract. I don't know if Miss, uh, Swenson is here, but essentially it's a contract, um, to provide training. And best practices for nine-one-one phone calls among other, um, among other needs for the Sheriff's Department. It's a total of nineteen thousand, six hundred ninety dollars and fifty-five cents. I don't know if we want.
I'll assume it's within their budget.
It is. I believe so.
Yeah.
I'm going to make a motion.
Please.
I move to approve the motivations training contract. I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Hadeen, seconded by Commissioner McCandless. Is there any discussion needed on this one? Anybody? Call for a vote? All in favor? It's unanimous with Commissioner Martinez.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, we've finished up with number four, finished up with five. We are up to number six, repeal and replace chapter eight point one six, special events of Grand County General Ordinances. Mike McCurdy was ending and bringing this forward.
All over the board here. We're going to start with, with the statement that this is definitely not the last time you're going to see this. Uh, this is a working document. I expect more changes. Uh, my main, uh, points of view and changes into this were appointing a special events. Get right to it. Special event coordinator, uh, as a county staff member. And I do, and already feeling that, I do expect, uh, Alicia to be looking at that, uh, just because she handles. Events already, so it, it falls with that position, but not to be named, uh, person to be a physician. Uh, the other large changes, uh, taking the, uh, qualifications for low impact and high impact events. Uh, the qualifications for a high-impact event used to be two fifty persons and fifty vehicles. Uh, push that to five hundred, uh, persons and, uh, a hundred vehicles. Uh, mainly, in all honesty, uh, it comes from, uh. Wanting to put on events, uh, myself, and honestly wanting to hold a wedding, uh, procession. Uh, my wedding, uh, my personal wedding procession would have been over three hundred people, and I would have had to ask for a special events permit. Uh, just the vehicles on sites, and that's obscene. I, I, I mean, I'm sorry that I am related to half the town. But, uh.
Don't apologize.
I, I don't think that, I don't see that being a fitting, uh, fitting thing. It, uh, the, uh, special events, uh, in general, will still have to go through. Uh, special events coordinator and all of the governing bodies, like Sheriff's Department, Roads Department, uh, falling underneath high impact. Uh, I mean, you still have to get the check-offs of those, but, uh, people know people, and I don't want that to become a thing in anyone else's, uh. Direct life, and I want to make it easier for events, uh, to be held in county. Uh, held in county with less roadblocks. The other. Large changes was a couple of the timelines. Uh, the timeline changes were mainly pointed at, uh. Mainly pointed at, uh, not approval or in general approvals, uh, on the timelines, or like. Trying to describe there. Sorry, I'm flipping through this very lately's document as we go.
Sure, I can add, add some additional context if, uh, Commissioner. Um, so going through the edits, Commissioner McCurdy had my office draft the document. Um, a background for commissioners, originally there was a special events committee that was formed. We had, I think, four or five different, um, members in the beginning, and then little by little, we started to shift down to fewer, fewer members. Kate Finley really led the, I think, the cleanest charge on special events process. And really went through and made it streamlined, and I think a lot of the difficulty, um, and, and a lot of people don't know this. Your low-impact and your high-impact events have to go through the entire, um, approval, is what the name of the, the, the.
Software.
Software is, approval system, and so that requires them to go through and get sign-offs from the Health Department, the Sheriff's Department, Roads. Um, many different departments, and ultimately, it results in the, uh, special event, uh, committee. Uh, prepping it up, making sure it's good, then hands it over to, uh, Clerk Auditor's Office for the final approval. One of the things for the determination for, uh, low-impact or high-impact, it was almost always just numbers count. And so you'd have to wait for five people to vote, whether it was more or less than two hundred and fifty, which at a certain point, I delegated my authority to Kate. I think Ben Fredergill delegated his authority to Kate. I think everybody just did at a certain point. And so, um, that was one, one thing. I, I want everyone just to take a glance. If you look at the definitions section. Um, special events, they identify under, under subsection one, noise is something that they consider when determining if something's going to be an event or not. Um, I, I think a lot of people that wrote in misunderstood that the, the ord, noise ordinance, like other ordinances, is still enforceable. Um, it's like camping and other things. I'd love to see all of our ordinances enforced that are on the books. Uh, but that is still something else that's, that requires, um, they have to comply with that. They have to comply with safety with the roadway. And so, that's, that's some of, uh, some of the information. So when we look at the committee, at a certain point. Your Commission Administrator, your Economic Development Director, your OSTA Director, and, and myself, the County Attorney. We, we were basically giving Kate the, the go-ahead to, to greenlight this. I think the people that are identified, be it Alicia or Jenny Beth, are more than capable to manage, um, this. And, and really, our portion of it, uh, isn't the meat and potatoes, it's the portion from the other entities. Like the, um, Health Department having to sign off on all your food vendors. So that's, that's one reason why. Um, you know, why removing the committee makes sense in a few different ways. There's only been one. I can think of one event, and, and I talked to, uh, Commissioner, Commissioner Hadler about this. There's only ever been one event that was utilized for traffic to kick it up to high-impact was the race for up, up for air. Um, and that was a disagreement, um, uh, between Mallory, Nassau, and myself. I said it based on the analysis triggered a high-impact, uh, event and brought it to you guys, and she said it wasn't a high-impact event. So even on, that's, I think that's one of the few ones that utilizing some of the other subcategories, but that wasn't flagged by, um, that wasn't flagged by. um, that wasn't flagged by roads. So just giving an additional, some additional context, um, to some of the changes that, that we made and if there's other questions on.
Sure, I know Tricia's first in line and then all of the show.
What I got from you on the onset, as you began to present is like, well, you know, we could change some of this. So here's my recommendation. We push this to a workshop and we take a couple of hours, all of us at workshop. That's just my recommendation. Cause I think it would be a lot more effective than us sitting here bantering. We've had a spec- I mean, we finally, to me, got a special events system that was working. And it was, you know, finally in the last, you know, year, I feel like it's finally working. But if you don't feel that way, I value that comment. But I, I think this would be better workshop. That's just my opinion. Cause I feel like we, we keep talking about things like transparency and again, this, this being kind of shoved through is not allowing that kind of collaboration and being very, very transparent. Uh, we've had, we, every single letter we've gotten regarding this is in opposition and we've gotten a lot. So that's just my opinion. I think it would be much more powerful than a general talk about it for a shop.
I, I was gonna give just a, a little more background. When I first got on, special events was kind of a mess and then, I mean, we, the system that we have now is, is, it's taken a lot of work and it's evolved, uh, a lot over the years. And, and like Tricia, now it is at the point where it seems way more streamlined and so streamlined in fact that when Kate left, who was fantastic, we we're like, all right, this is in a spot now where we don't even need to hire a, a full-time special events coordinator at a, at a full-time salary. We can, we can kind of split it out to a couple of employees that are already on the, on the books and, and just, just bump them a little bit for the extra work. Um, so I'm honestly super stoked at where it is because it was, it was a pain in the butt, uh, previously. Um, so over the years that we've made those changes, we, um, and I was actually gonna say the same thing as Trish. Uh, each time we made a major change, we did workshop that. We, we took it back to the commission and, and spent some time. Um, I totally respect where you're coming from, Mike, but I think it's, I think it's worth more of a holistic discussion amongst us. Um, and then an agenda item, and I think, I, I think your letter's a good place to start, but I, there's, there's a few things that I'd like to, to work on and I think there's compromises that, that can be made. So I, I'd follow in, uh, Commissioner Hadeen's uh, shoes and recommend a, a workshop at the next mission, uh, next commission meeting even. I think it would probably only take an hour or so. Um, or potentially the first one in February. I don't know. That, that's, that's up to, up to staff if they have the capacity for that, but, but, uh, yeah.
And Mike, I've got others, Eddie, let me just finish that and we'll come back to you, but Brian, um, has had to end up then Mary.
Yeah, just really quickly, um, you know, one of the things that I do like about this is, and from what I remember as well is the original intent to apply and putting that in there was to streamline things and make them faster. Um, and so removing that board, right, does make things faster, right? I mean, and that, that we heard, we, we, uh, uh, we only, we only rejected one, 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 one event out of all of those events right there. So, you know, I mean, I do like the way that this is looking right here because it makes things faster. I mean, and that should be the purpose and that was the, at least that's what I, I was told was the original purpose of why we were moving for the intent to apply, right? We had the choice, like, are we gonna put this in the front to where we're the first, we're the first face that the, uh, the, uh, organizers don't have to, you know, go through all these processes to, uh, uh, to find out that the commissioner, uh, the commission just didn't have an appetite for it. Like I, I thought that was the original. That was the, okay, perfect, thank you. I just wanted to make sure. And so, you know, it feels like, yeah, yeah, there were other reasons as well, but that was the, that was one of the main reasons. And so, uh, I do think that, that what's happening right here in this does seem like it's following that. Now, I think the other thing that might be, you know, something might be the, the numbers right there. And I think that might be what people are maybe having the, the biggest time or the hardest time with. So I don't know, I don't know if we have time tonight, but if it's something simply as what the numbers are, I don't know why we couldn't just go around right now and just discuss what's, what's, what, what everybody has an appetite for.
Yeah, let, we'll go on. Mary, you're next and then Melody and then we'll come back to Mike.
And, and you said one of my things with, uh, the special events ordinance was, uh, very time consuming. We spent many, many months and work shopping and inviting the public and inviting various people. It didn't happen overnight and the reason we started it was for, uh, I think three main reasons was, I don't know, you, a lot of you that were here will remember there were times that things would get under the radar because they did, we didn't have a good system for people looking at it. I don't know if any of you remember the Labor Day, the Memorial Day weekend when we all of a sudden had like three to four events on the same weekend. We had, uh, uh, art festival, we had a running race and then we had this motorcycle rally that, that, uh, and, and you could, the parking lot and city market was dangerous. I mean, uh, the police were going crazy because I mean, especially with the bikers that came in town, there was one, one ticket after another ticket there, you know, and, and so we wanted to prevent that from happening. We wanted finger, figure out a way to get the events so that they were staggered so that one weekend didn't have a whole bunch and another weekend had a lot. We also, like, uh, you said, we wanted to, uh, do it so that it was really awkward. It was really awkward. Trish was on the board, uh, on the commission, so was Jock. When someone would come to us at the end for approval and we had some kickups and yet we felt very extremely uncomfortable saying no because they'd already spent all this money to get to that point. So put them up front, put them right at the beginning. Your intent to apply happens right at the beginning. So if, if there's somebody that says, no, this event is not what is formal of, we don't want, uh, you know, a nudist colony or whatever, a drag show queen or whatever, we don't want that. They know right away. They don't spend any money. And the other reason we did, did it was because uh, it, it was intense when we were having a lot of events and a lot of noisy events. I mean, you thought we got a lot of emails over the last two days. We had that kind of emails almost weekly complaining about the noise. It was, I mean, it was like, uh, very, very hard. So, so we did it to, to help with the uh, quality of life for our residents. You know, that was a big part. And it was also to help law enforcement and E M Ts and, and people that had to be part of these to, you know, to, to instead of having the taxpayers subsidize them, if it was gonna involve a lot of, uh, uh, law enforcement or it's gonna law involve EMS, then there was some, they paid for it. They were making money coming here. They paid for it. So it, 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 you know, I think all ordinances should be a work in process. But I don't, I, I would prefer a process where we had a meeting, we had a workshop, we went through it, we discussed it, uh, to, uh, to find out about this on and, and look at it, well, knowing all the time and effort that was put into this original ordinance to all of a sudden have it changed, in my opinion, quite dramatically without any public input, without an open public meeting is, is not, I'm not comfortable with that. It's, you know, I, I would prefer to see, see it done in a workshop with all of us talking about it and, and like we did in the past. And so I, I'm just, I'm really uncomfortable with it's like cutting it off at the knees.
Well, I would like to move on to Melody, but I, I am gonna suggest that if we are interested in a workshop, that we save these long lengthy discussions for the workshop, if that's the direction we're going rather than everybody spend thirty minutes discussing here and then we go to a workshop, but.
Well, I'll make a motion to postpone this, uh, item to another meeting, to a, to a workshop setting. I would second that. Then that would speed it up.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner McGann to postpone. Seconded by Commissioner Hadeen and we will open this up to further discussion. I wanted to get back to Melody first. We kinda ran over the top of Melody and then we've got Jock and Mike. Thank you.
So I met with, uh, Alicia and Quinn today and they walked me through the whole process of, um, of the special events. So if I came in and I wanted to do a special event, what would I do and how would I go through it? And then what happens once they get the information? And currently, uh, there's basically one person agree, um, approving it, not a committee at the moment. So this would be zero change to what's currently happening versus what is, um, the proposed change. And then as far as, as far as all of the things that you talked about, which are fantastic, I mean, the events, the processes that you guys have gone through to make sure that we don't have EMS or search and rescue overrun is, is still in the process. There's none of that that is changing based upon this, um, these, these changes. So the changes that are happening in this proposed motion, if we did it, it, I, it would be, um, that there was no longer a committee. It would just be, the events, special events coordinator, which is Jenny Beth now, that would decide if it's higher low. If it's low, then they get their, hey, your event's low and you get your process. If it's high, then they're gonna get, it's gonna come before the commission as well. And then after that point, when it's approved, then they fill out their, their forms. And so the low is gonna go through and fill out all of their forms and that, but if they don't meet it with the sheriff. So if the sheriff says, nope, too many events, or EMS says, nope, too many events, then that's still happening. That checking balance is still happening. So it's, we're not gonna get overrun with events just because we're gonna take out a small section that doesn't come before the commission. Because we have other things that are super important that need to come before the commission, not just every event. So we're just changing that threshold to a, a different amount of numbers is going to be able to just get passed on to be a low hot impact and to go through all their processes. So it still might get thrown out as far as when it goes through the sheriff or the EMS or, um, the other processes that it has, they don't get their B L M, um, and then the high impacts are gonna come before the commission. And so that's where it didn't look like there was much that would change at all. I mean, just putting into words and allowing a little bit, a three hundred person wedding to be able to be a low impact event and get their stuff done so they can plan their wedding instead of waiting to come before the commission to get approval to fill out their form.
Thank you. Yeah, just speaking toward, speaking to a, uh, to a workshop and, and the reason why I think it would be good to workshop it. I, to me, it's not just the numbers. I think the numbers are important, but it's that whole, uh, uh, eight point one, six point zero, six zero, uh, A, all of those, uh, the, what strike we struck, no anticipated noise or crowding impacts or other disruption on county roadways, neighborhoods or public lands, which roadways include or not limited to Mill Creek Drive, Kink Creek Boulevard, Spanish Valley Drive, um, as well as no impact on county resources staffing beyond normal operations as public safety also. So that, that whole section I think should be looked at. Uh, most of the complaints we heard from citizens actually lived along those said roads. Um, and as far as the numbers go, um, I'm, I'm willing to work on the numbers, but, but if you, if you make a ninety nine vehicle U T V rally, a low impact event, I think you're gonna have a lot of people in town who are, who are gonna be extremely upset about that. I, I think that's very different than having a wedding procession and, and you know, you might have a, a dude even more popular than Mike who wants a hundred ten vehicles at their wedding procession, uh, procession and, and they'd have to go do the same thing. So, um, you know, I think that's an extreme case. I don't, I don't think you're gonna see too many of those and, uh, a- anyway, that's the reason I think it would be worth a workshop. I think in the name of transparency and just, and just getting it out there and, and getting heard. Again, I'd be happy to uh, talk about the numbers and, and, and go forward with that, but I think workshop would be a better situation. I think we can do that in an hour and get it done and pass something that, that most people are amenable to.
All right, Mike. Hey, I'm still here. I, actually, I'm, I'm amenable to, uh, a workshop. I would like to continue the conversation on, uh, not those points and more points to that. I wanna be very honest in my point of view on this. I'm sorry you all spent so much time making an ordinance stifling events. That's what it did. It was very directed and that's what it did. I've been workshopping and doing my homework the best I can for almost two years now, making incremental changes. I'm taking more leeway in this. It's been two years. I'm gonna make more changes in my view on this special events ordinance. Uh, the numbers, I, I understand the numbers, but not in different degrees. I'm not pointing everything at U T V rallies. If I wanna gather up car guys, I could surpass a hundred. We know that. I, it, I'm open to working on the numbers, joyful spending another hour, but, uh, this the starting of, uh, my working on this, uh, i- is, is pointed at a, a non-working events ordinance. And again, I know you guys spent a lot of time on it, but we'll throw a little bit more time at it.
So I, we have a motion on and I would call for a vote, but first I'd like to make a, a few comments as well and I, I don't really feel that the policy is working very well either. I'm, I'm not as invested in it as Mike is. I just think that if we wanna go to a workshop and come out of it and have a one hour discussion again, the workshop is kind of pointless. It's almost better that we make some the vote right now is what I'm saying. So if we wanna be transparent and honest and we're gonna go into a workshop and we work with each other, wo- workshop, we're working, meaning that there's some bu- movement on both sides. I'm all in favor of it, but not to go stand on and die on a sword and then come out and stand and die on a sword, which would be then the third time. And so I'm, I'm curious. Thank you, but let me finish too also. And when it comes to the U T Vs, and I don't know if the rest of you have seen it, but I'd like to just throw it out there. The U T Vs are kind of self-correcting their own problem. Okay, they are so expensive. I can't afford one. I, I don't want one, but I can't afford one and they, they are slowly becoming so expensive that I think that the events that we're gonna see are not gonna be U T V. Now, do we wanna worry about two hundred U T Vs in town? Of course I do. I'm a sensitive to the noise ordinance as anybody is. My house used to be devastated by it. Now, moving forward, I'm, I just think that some of the public dissent or the battles that they have, they're already going away. They're already going away because of this U T V issue. It's no different than the Jeeps and the Jeep Safari. It's another toy that I can't afford either, or else I prioritize something else over it. So that, that's my suggestion. If we're, let's go for a vote, Mike, I'll, um, if you wanna wrap up here, but I, I'd like to move on if we're gonna put this to a.
Let's just make more layers. Uh, I'd like to make a substitute motion or an amend a motion. And can I also? Okay. I'd like to make.
My visual expression, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'd like to make the motion that we pass as written, uh, this or, uh, this ordinance. And I'd like to direct staff to making workshop still on the same ordinance next meeting.
But, but that's a lot of work for staff to have to.
So.
Okay, there's a motion. We have two on the floor now. We have two, we have a second for Mike's, um, second as written with the workshop at the next meeting or in the near future with Commissioner Martinez seconded.
I the commission can do whatever the commission would like to do. Um, I will state that. I think if you're going to pass it, the cleanest way is you can pass it and come back and, and, and look at it again. I think if you wanna do a workshop, I think, you know, pass it tonight and you go do a workshop. I think if you pass it and then make a contingent on a workshop, well, then we're gonna have to turn around and vote on it anyways. It's, it's gonna get really, really complicated. Not to say that you can't do that, but, um, it, it's gonna get, it, it's gonna get really complicated. If we wanna do a workshop, I'd encourage the commission to do a workshop. If you guys wanna make some edits and adjustments, do that. If you guys wanna pass it as is, do that. I, I would, there, there's not, that doesn't, it's not a wonderful marriage combining those two in the same. I, I, I agree. It's not a wonderful marriage, but I did state in the beginning with everyone in here, I do want to work on this further. Like I, I do want those points of view. I, I do want the examples, but we keep beating this thing to death and it needs to change.
I'm Jock.
Yeah, I'm, I mean, I, I would certainly go into a workshop with good faith. I mean, you could do a workshop in two weeks and, and have this done and be going through it, changing it, signing all the papers, doing that, entering it into our system and then going back and changing it the next week. To me seems a little bit ridiculous. I, I will give you my word that on good faith, I'll work with you on this. I'll compromise on, on things and come to an understanding. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna grandstand on it. I will, I'll.
It's my sword.
Oh, I'll, I'll, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll come to the table with you, Mike personally.
So are we willing to let this die, the second motion, or do we?
Willing to let that die with words. Willing to let that die with words said.
Okay.
Okay, so then I'm going to call for a vote on the first motion.
To postpone.
Oh, you received a second, so you have to let the substitute motion get a vote.
Oh, okay, I thought that I could let that die on the line.
No, because there was a second. When commissioners, when commissioners make motions and second it, we have to go into the next.
Okay. So, so then I'm gonna call for a vote on Mike's amended motion that we put this in effect for right now. So all those in favor?
Understand.
Okay, and those opposed? Okay, that passes.
Fails.
That fails, thank you, with Commissioner McCurdy being the lone vote in favor.
You actually called the opposition, so you'd call each of the six.
I have to call out the opposition.
That's, so yeah, when you call, you don't have to call those who voted in favor, you call out.
Okay, thank you. So those in opposition, Commissioner Hadeen, Commissioner Hadler, Commissioner McGann, Commissioner Martinez, Commissioner Candless and Commissioner Winfield.
All right, now you're back to the.
Now we're back to the original. So that original is to postpone this to a workshop was made by Commissioner McGann, correct? And seconded by Commissioner Hadeen, thank you.
And can I just put a timeline on that? I don't know if we can amend that.
It's in two weeks.
We, we did talk about it. I don't know if that timeline needs to be added into the.
Put it on the, we will, I will make sure it's on the agenda. We'll put it on the agenda as workshops.
It's on the workshop.
So then, with, there's no further discussion, I'll just call for a vote, those in favor of workshop at the next commission meeting to sort this out. And that passes unanimously with everybody in favor of the workshop. Motion by Commissioner McGann, seconded by Commissioner Hadeen. Okay, thank you for that, everybody. And we are on to, making sure I haven't done the next one I wanted to call out. We're on to number seven, a resolution establishing an advertising policy, including but not limited to activities relating to establishment and promotion of tourism film and conventions. So I will open this one up. Um, I think that it, I'm, I have mine anymore. I think that it's pretty self-explanatory. I am the one that asked for this to be put on the agenda and I think that, um, it's important that we look at this and move forward with a plan here. And I think that there's some misconception that the responsible recreation is being completely absolved out of this when we're really looking for that to be the secondary message, not the predominant one. And so, yes, Jacques, I'll, I'll open this up for discussion. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you, Bill. Um, yeah, I, I wanted to point out a number of things. I think, I, I think the timing on this is interesting. I think this year, twenty twenty four, has been a year of, of words like over tourism and, and sustainable tourism. Um, I myself traveled abroad this year and, and encountered, uh, the situation in, in Africa as well as in Europe. Uh, but I'd invite any of you to Google the word over tourism or go to Wikipedia and, and look at that. There's some super interesting stuff out there. There's tons of articles. Um, so Grand County, when we did this, I think we were kind of, uh, we were on the cutting edge of, of promoting ourselves responsibly, um, and looking at, uh, promotion holistically and, and kinda educating the people that come to recreate and enjoy our area. Um, you know, giving them a little bit of guideline and, and, and whatnot as to how to, how to, how to, how to work with us and work with, with locals. Uh, we had a situation in twenty twenty one where we got, we got somewhat overwhelmed with tourism. I remember times, I remember people, I have friends in the, who rent U T Vs and, and they were complaining about, um, about locals giving the finger to people that rented U T Vs from them, making them feel extremely unwelcome. Um, that's a symptom of over tourism. Over tourism is, is bad for tourism in the places where tourism exists. It makes people feel unwelcome. It makes, locals are pissed, um, and, and mad in a lot of these places. There was big articles, Lisbon, uh, Portugal, uh, Barcelona, Spain and, and parts of Italy, uh, were overrun with tourists and, and locals got mad and rioted in some cases and threw stuff at tourists and, and made them extremely unhappy. It's happened in Hawaii. Um, I have absolutely no desire to see that happen here. And I think with, with levels like in twenty twenty one, we were, we were on that path. We had some of that going on here. And when we advertise in such a way, by all means, let's, let's make everybody, let's advertise to people, make them feel welcome. Um, we want people to come here, we want people to play, I want people to take my bike tours, I want people to rent bikes for me, uh, to hike on our trails. But at the same time, I want them to do so in a manner that, 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 that keeps people happy, keeps locals happy, keeps other tourists happy, keeps people coming back. Um, and, and I, I think most tourists in this day and age actually appreciate that. They wanna go to a place that prides itself in its stewardship of its area. They wanna go to a place where the locals are, are happy and welcoming and, and not angry about their effects on tourism. And, and, and we've done an amazing job, again, at leading this charge. Um, we had, I was, I was privy to an M O U assigned at the whole South Region of France, uh, and they signed an M O U with the Utah Office of Tourism. I can forward that to you guys if you want. We did it out at, we'd get it out at Red Cliffs, um, at Red Cliffs Lodge and, and the president of the whole region of Southern France, which includes the Southern Alps, it includes the Cote d'Azur, it includes all that Mediterranean coast there, a, a beautiful area that attracts tons of tourists, wanted to sign an M O U with the Utah Office of Tourism. And, uh, some of the top reasons that they said were because they wanted to, to share stewardage, stewardship principles with us. And they specifically wanted to sign it in Moab instead of Park City or, or Salt Lake or something like that because, uh, they, they loved our scenery and our land and they also loved what we were doing with our, with our messaging. Um, I'll forward that to you guys if you want. I, I have that available. So I think to, to wrap it up, sorry, I've taken a ton of time on this. It, it's really important to me. Um, I, I think our, our messaging is win-win. I think it, I think it, it, it creates a great environment for tourists. It helps locals along. Um, it attracts people who are going to, to treat our crown jewel public lands in a, in a way that, that allows people to enjoy them in perpetuity. It'll let my kids, my grandkids, uh, you know, enjoy the fruits of tourism here in Moab in twenty and thirty years. So I'm, I'm, I'm opposed to this. I think, I think, I think we'd be going backwards. Um, I think this is the moment for this kind of thing. And again, I please, I invite you guys to Google some of these terms, um, and look what other places are doing. Look what, look what, look what's popular now, look what's trending. Go to that Wikipedia site, look at all the, the ways, there, there's, there's ten ways they talk about to deal, or eleven ways to deal with over tourism. And three of them are, are directly what we're talking about here. One is involve local residents in tourism policymaking. Another one is communicate with tourists about the potential impacts of tourism on communities. And a third is make effective use of regulations on tourism. And those are ways to mitigate some of these challenges that a lot of communities that are, that, that have even more tourists coming than we do, um, deal with. So I'll let somebody else speak. Thank you.
Okay, I've got Brian next, Trish, Mary, and if I switch, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'll, I'll start off. I'd like to, uh, move to make a motion that the Grand County Commission, um, approves the, um, oh, I'm sorry, repeals and replaces the Grand County Resolution thirty-two forty-eight twenty twenty-two and adopts the following policy.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Martinez and seconded by Mike McCurdy, Commissioner McCurdy. And so then I will open it up to further discussion. That'll, um, take it over to you, Trish.
Yeah, I think Jacques did a really nice, thank you. Um, Jacques did a really nice job of kind of talking about why, uh, responsible recreation is such an important part of our tourism economy. Kinda throw out a couple of quick little anecdotes and then maybe a couple of suggestions. I'm the hunter education instructor. Last night we had our first class. When I really think about that, it's this sport that I love. And, and when I teach that class and it's the curriculum that I've given, the bulk of that curriculum now is about ethics and it's about responsible, what is a response, responsible hunter? Responsible hunter is you take care of the land, you take care of fellow users, et cetera, and so on. So it's inundating, you know, this, this is a curriculum that is nationwide and that is the bulk of that curriculum. We talk about firearm safety, but that is not the bulk of the curriculum. As, and aside, I'm a climber. I love climbing. I've climbed in Indian Creek for over twenty years. And at a certain point, it became extremely evident that we were degrading that environment, climbers were. And we took it upon ourselves to start an organization, Friends of Indian Creek, and started to work on the impacts that we were producing. And so, and it's hard because we have so many people in Indian Creek, we have climbers from all over the world that come that do not understand this environment and how fragile it is. And so providing that education, I think, is of extreme importance. So my two suggestions, and I'm not gonna change a motion, I just, I'm gonna throw this out. I think two things, um, the last one, number four says, education responsible recreation message may be included. I would ask that it is either should be or shall be. I, I don't think it should be an aside. I think it should be coupled. If, if you want it to be the secondary messaging, it is what it is. I don't agree with it, but I think that it should be coupled with, you have to understand there's people coming from all over the world. They do not understand the fragile nature of our ecosystem, of our cultural resources, of our paleo, paleontological resources.
Our residents' ears.
Yeah. And then the other thing that I would recommend, just because I don't know how practical it is, is no later than sixty days. And I might just think about moving that a little bit. I think that's a, a really short timeline. So, you know, I would recommend six months, but if you wanna do ninety days, I just think sixty days is really, really short. Just might a couple of weeks. And do put that one to.
Okay. Mary, I think.
Yes, uh, and I apologize last time for going on so long. So I, I'll, I'll work on not becoming so emotional about what I'm talking about. Uh, responsible, we have gotten so, I mean, we, not only did we have the people from France and seriously, they came, flew into Salt Lake and said, we want to sign this in Grand County because we want to duplicate what they're doing. They were so impressed with what we were doing. And we got the gold medal, the, what, not what's a gold medal, what did we win? Uh, only person in the state just, uh, for a responsible recreation. I mean, we're being recognized nationally and internationally for our forward thinking. And, and so I, I really think it's a mistake. I think this is going backwards. And secondly, I, I'm uncomfortable with the process. When we established this resolution, it was discussed, established in, in, you know, in a process and not just all of a sudden showing up on the agenda. Uh, and I, I, I once again think that, you know, like, like, uh, Trish, Trish has already recommended a couple of ideas and such. And I, I think taking the time, I know, you know, when we got this, we didn't have that much time to study all of the things that were being changed. And I think it's, uh, put, I think it's pulling the trigger too quickly. I don't, I'm always open. I told the travel council, but yeah, I, I'm open to relooking at it. I think it's a good idea. I think all resolutions need to be really, really looked at. All ordinances, all bylaws, they shouldn't just be in stone. But I think there's a better process than just one or two people working on it and bringing it forward. Uh, so that's, that's why I won't be voting to approve this unless we do some change.
Go ahead, Brian. Sorry, gotta get used to this mic thing here.
Yeah, it's hard, isn't it?
Yeah, it's gonna take me a little bit. Um, you know, first off, I'd like to, I don't know if you guys looked at the old ordinance previous, we had that. I mean, right at the start, it still says, you know, Grand County will spread approximately forty-eight percent of its transient room tax collections. That's the, that's the, that's the beginning.
That's why I think it needs to be worked up. I, I, I agree with you.
So yeah, it, it has already been out of, it's been out of date. It was all out of date last year. If we look at the, um, the advertising that's happening right now, currently with our travel council, we are breaking this because it's, it was an unattainable goal to have all responsible or all advertising be responsible recreation. Now, a couple of things that I wanted to point out, um, as well, um, that's been said is Jacques, you know, talking about, you know, uh, uh, you know, the worldwide, you know, view on responsible recreation. You know, this, uh, well, past year in February, you know, that I took the, um, the, uh, Grand County Travel Council or Economic Development to Berlin, right? And I actually put him inside of the responsible recreation, right? Uh, uh, I'm sorry, it was called the Sustainable, right, Recreation, um, Little Department. I mean, this place was huge. Uh, if you can imagine like a super Walmart, right? It was one of those with another one on top of it and there was twenty-six of them. That's how big the world market is when we're looking at something like this. Sustainable tourism took up almost an entire place. So this is something that is happening all throughout the world, right? And I have had a chance to look at that messaging. And one of the big things with that messaging is, right, is you, you're still asking people to come first and then saying, come visit us, right? We're showing a welcoming message, right? Cause that's the first thing that they're gonna hear is please come visit us. Our doors are open. We'd love to teach you how to do this responsibly, right? And I think that this ordinance right here really gets down into that right there. Um, you know, Trish's, Trish's comment right there of, you know, changing it from may to should, oh, um, you know, that's, that, that sounds okay. Um, you know, another thing that, that I'd like to, uh, to bring up as well is, you know, this is also partly in response to the state auditor, right? The definitions that we had for tourism were, were off compared to what the state auditor is telling us. And this does correct some of those definitions. Um, you know, I think it was Jacques said that you should Google these definitions. You know, when, when I looked at this right here, I actually did Google these definitions.
I actually just said Google over tourism definition.
Oh, oh, over tourism, okay. Yeah, yeah, because, you know, uh, responsible recreation, that is what the definition, I mean, that, that, that definition has been modified as well to what comes up as the, the definition of responsible recreation. Um, so anyways, that's, that's all I have.
So, sorry, Brian. So would you be amenable to some of the changes that Trish talked about?
What were those changes?
Um, I just mentioned that in the number four, that the messaging should be included as a secondary message, the predominant promotion message or shall. Um, probably I'd be happier with should. And then number three, I would just extend, I think it would be really hard for, um, all things to, you know, if we think about things like billboards, can you get them down and replaced in sixty days? I would just extend that a little bit to be a little more practical, a little more reasonable, maybe six months, but ninety days.
I'd like to let the county attorney weigh in and then Melody and myself both as well.
I was just gonna note, I would, I would encourage commissioners to discuss a little bit more before we jump on and, and suggest changes and then go back and forth back. So maybe see, you know, check the, the soil if it's fertile for these ideas. Uh, but you guys can do whatever you want, but it's, it makes it really hard on, on, uh, to do the motions and the subsequent motions and the reverses and everything else. So just noting that.
All right, go ahead, Melody.
Um, I was just, well, curious when this motion, when this first ordinance was put into place, was the travel council on board with that messaging to be the predominant? Because that is their goal, the, the travel, area travel council is, develops and submits the recommended marketing and plan. So were they included in that? I'm just curious. And then I'm a hundred percent for responsible recreation, just like I'm wanting all of our visitors to have a tremendous time here, tell their friends and come back. But I don't think that telling people what to do in your advertising message is a good idea. Um, so as a secondary, I think shall works for me as well, you know? Um, and then as far as the timeline goes, to say as soon as possible, possibly versus the like timelines, um, so that they can start working on it. But, you know, even looking at some of what's coming out from them, like you said, isn't having that recreation, um, first. So I need to talk closer. Oh, so anyways, that's all, that's all I have to say.
And I, I think that this was brought about because there hasn't been a whole lot of willingness to look at some of this stuff in the past. And the message that we would like to have for our visitors in this county first is you're welcome. That, that is what the goal is here, is to change the message to you're welcome. And we know that for multiple years now, that message hasn't been welcoming. And I'm not talking about a specific group, the U T Vers or the bikers or any one of them. It should be art bomb that people are welcome here. We wanna welcome them. Somebody welcomed me, somebody welcomed Commissioner McGann at one time and all of us. And that's the message that we need to portray and we haven't. And we pushed a huge part of our tourism industry out of town and they've gone elsewhere. And I mean, even to the point now, the mountain bike capital of the world isn't advertised as Grand County, it's Bentonville.
Those guys stole that.
And I, I, I think we've gotta get back to the basics of good manners in opening up and inviting people here. And I would be fine with shall, as Melody recommended, the sixty day. I started out with thirty, I'm sorry. I, I, there's needs to be pressure on to change the message. I, there's needs to be pressure on to change the message. The, the locals aren't supportive of the current message, and we have to move forward and make some changes with this. And this is a very short resolution, I think that I had this in there by Thursday. We've done our best, anybody can always contact me via email if they wanna change some verbiages ahead of time. I, I, and my goal is, is to make that even more stringent on the admin. To not let Bill Winfield or anybody else have the privilege of sneaking something in at the last minute. We want everybody to be able to have three or four days to go over this stuff. And that's the intent, and, and if I missed it on this one, I'm apologizing now, but I don't believe I did, you can look at this, you can say, Bill, can we change this word? I, I'm open to that from anybody. And so, the, the only thing I really would like to see changed is possibly the word shall, is we move forward here.
That as well, and county attorney again.
So, okay, the word shall is a lot more charged and it's more difficult, I'd encourage the word must or should. Shall in certain contexts, uh, permits, is permissive, so shall or mu- must is a better word, sometimes people mean the word. Must when they say shall or should, so I'd either say must.
I would go with the should, I, I don't want the stronger message that it has to be in there at all, that, that isn't the goal here, the goal is a welcoming message. And the secondary message is responsible recreation, and we all. Are called to preach the responsible recreation as we all do to our fellow users of whatever that sport is, so. I, I just think that's the important part of this, so I, I think Brian had his hand up, and then I'll put it in melody.
Yeah, and just, you know, as well, I just wanna make sure that we're. We're all on the same page, that we all want responsible recreation, we all want those messages to come out. Right, I still want those messages to be part of, of what's going on, right, I mean, I love this place just as much as you do, Trish and Jacques. You know, Mike, you know, I mean, we all have, and Bill and Melody, you know, we all have a, 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 a love for this place, and we want this place to be protected. Right, but we also need to make sure that our guests feel welcome, and I do feel that sometimes we turn these things into it's an all or nothing. Right, and I really hope that we can stop that right there, that we have to not always go to the extremes, right, that, that either you have a no salt diet. Or it's just all pepper for you, you know, I wish that we'd kinda just, you know, we'd all just be like, you know, there's, there's someplace in the middle. Where we're all gonna agree, and if should is what does that, let's do it, I mean, I'm all for it.
Okay, so one quick question is if we're gonna change, if we wanna use should for, um, number four, instead of may. And then number two also says shall ensure, so should we put should there also? So those are my two que- two comments with.
I think two is, two is, would be a must, if I'm understanding what the, what people are saying, so two would be, shall would become must. And four, may would become should.
There's a shall in one A also.
One A, let me look that. But that's also, it's a definition.
Definitions.
It's a definition, but in the number two, so all three, current, current Grand County advertising activities. Will. Ensure that predominant message is promotion as defined here, and, and then for number four, it's the educational responsible recreation messaging. Should be included as a secondary message to predominant promotion message. And I think Oscar said it really great, he said Moab is resi- ready for visitors, and I think that's what we want people to know.
So.
So could you, could he just amend his motion to put, change those words?
Yeah, I'll, I'll amend the motion to change the word shall to must in. In number, number two, and then change the word, um, from may to should in number four.
Okay, any other discussion?
You need a second before the discussion.
Second.
That was an amendment, not a substitution.
Okay, fine, I'll let you guys have it, even though there's a second technically.
So, so.
Go ahead, Jacques.
Oh, I just wanted to check with Stephen, so in number four, where you're, you're suggesting we use the word, um, should. Is not as strong as must or in my mind, shall. What, what it, what is, so should means it will be?
It's encour- I mean, should is, it is encouraged, I mean, you could use the words, I mean, must, will, should, is strongly encouraged. I mean, you guys have a whole lexicon of words that you could choose from.
Sure, yeah, I'd be, I'd be, I'd, I'd support with, with a must or, or something stronger than should, I think, I'd, I'd be supportive of that. I think.
They're different words.
Yeah, they are.
You said must and then should.
No, no, I'd, I, I would prefer must over should, it number four also, and then I'd, I'd get behind that, I'd, I'd support, I'd support that.
I'd be very happy with that.
I'm not willing to change it on this for myself.
And as a, is a secondary, you know, as a secondary, and, and that's, I mean, I think this is making a, a pretty big statement, that this is our secondary. Thing, but previously, it's been our primary, uh, goal, and it. You know, secondary could be what secondary is, it doesn't even have to be very, very much, but, so, the, that's where, that's where.
Strongly encouraged.
I was gonna, I was actually gonna say, strongly encourages, I think, would be a step up from the should, right there, and I think that.
Spectrum, on, on the spectrum.
And I, I'd be fine with that change, I, I just don't want it mandatory that every advertisement we have has to have a responsible recreation in it. That's the original intent of this change. Oh, do you wanna amend?
I'll, I'll amend by amendment that on. I'm sorry, Gabe, I apologize, but. Number four, that it should read that educational and responsible recreation messages. Messaging is strongly encouraged to be included as a secondary message to the predominant promotion message.
With number two being a will or must.
Correct.
All right, that's good.
Okay, call for a vote, all those in favor? Okay, those opposed. Commissioner Hadeen.
I appreciate the manipulation, I, I appreciate the words.
With Commissioner Hadeen in opposition, six to one with Commissioner Hadeen in opposition. Number nine.
I said last year.
Economic Development Department budget and activities, and this one, it's, um, got some participation, participation with Bill and. Gabe on this.
We're onto the discussion, right?
Number nine, Economic Development Department.
It should be a discussion.
Yeah, it got put into the.
We talked about it in, in review, Bill wanted it to be on an, an action item, I, I forget.
There is no motion, the.
It's a discussion of.
Advertising policies, let's see, sorry, that's.
I, I remember you specifically said something that, cuz you wanted it on the, uh, on the action instead of a discussion, but I, I, I forget.
We were gonna go over some of the sixteen and twenty-three budgets with Gabe, there needs to be an action item. Trying to remember what my discussion was, to be honest with you.
There's no attachments.
Open it up, Melody, go ahead.
Okay, I think one of the things when I was looking over the budget with twenty-three is that all of the revenue that goes into Fund Twenty-three. Except for the two hundred dollars, um, which is the rural county grant, is all TRT money, and so, we just wanna make sure that we're not paying. Um, economic development activities out of TRT money, which is what the. Audit was for, and so I think that's our biggest concern, looking at. Um, the, everything being transferred from Fund Sixteen to Fund Twenty-three, is just, like I said, the, um. To me, it looks like the revenue that's in there is TRT, and so there's no revenue in there to pay for that economic development. Portion that's inside of that number twenty-three.
Yeah, yeah, so, um. I guess I would just want clarification, because I guess it, I think part of the problem might be is the title of the department is Economic Development. The nature of, you know, what its activity at this point, and so that might be the starting of the problem. But did you have, um, were there budgeted expenses that were economic development related specific that you had, that you had highlighted or seen? Um, that were in the budget?
Well, specifically, um, you know, dispersing those grants, if you're gonna be, the rural Utah, the rural county grant is in that two hundred thousand dollars. But if you, but who disperses that grant, and where's that money coming from to pay the person that's dispersing those grants or doing the, the work on it? I mean, that's just a really tiny piece, but still.
So you see, there wasn't a, a, a matching revenue for the rural county grant, and that, that could be an oversight.
Yeah, and I would imagine the economic development is doing, I mean, I don't know, cuz I'm learning, so, but it seems like there's, where, I don't know where they're getting paid. From, because we still have the Economic Development Department that is not doing all tourism, so where are they being paid?
And so there, there is that split that we agreed to in the, the letter to the state auditor, and I, I forgive me, I don't have the exact split. That was sort of agreed upon by the state auditor's office, but there is a portion of. Um, of the film, and it, yeah, and it's not well broken out or detailed here, and, and so that, that more exposition is needed. Um, but on the economic development side, not the film commissioner, obviously, um, but there, there is staff time. That's being paid out of the general fund, uh, for the, the support of like rural county grant and other, like the Economic Development Advisory Board and.
And do you have that broke out in here somewhere, or does that need to be done?
Um, it should be included in this budget, in a, like, it should be budgeted for, um, in a, in a separate line. But I, I, I would need to follow up on that, and, and tha- and that's one of these things where, um, certainly. Um, s- you know, I, I, the, this, this change to twenty-three wa- was, you know, it wa- it was done kind of late. As a way to, to just try to get this, to, to get this memorialized in a way that would satisfy the state auditor's office. And it could just be that, that, that piece of, of splitting the salary and benefit, um, you know, wasn't included in that split out, and. You know, ultimately, yeah, that's less than ideal, so I acknowledge that, but also, I, I do look at the budget as something that, um. You know, can always be amended and, and corrected, and it's not really a, you know, I'm not trying to make an excuse, but it, it's something that we can correct.
Absolutely, and we just wanna, and that's, I think, when I, we, I looked at, at, at it, as an agenda item, that's what I saw. And that, and, and based upon the conversations that had been happening during the budget workshop and last meeting, is, is that, so there may be some other things that Bill has. But I just think it's really important to get that in line before we get called out on it, so.
And, and I've assembled my notes here, I've had so many different packets, I apologize, I wasn't a little bit better prepared when this one come up. But I do think that there needs to be a motion made, and the concerns that I had were over the funds that are being spent in there. With very little clarity of what's going on, and so it, I think that a motion to freeze these funds. For the time being, until we've had a chance to work through them and go through some of them, and the, one of the biggest ones for me. Is the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to rebrand. And I, I don't know if that's to rebrand Moab or Grand County, I don't know how they had that title, but that's a huge one for me. And then there's the professional services that needs to be cleaned up a little bit, where we've got a million two hundred thousand in it. And not a huge amount of explanation for a lot of this stuff, and I just think that. Um, uh, motion to slow this down and stop it for right now, and give a couple of us a chance to work with you, Gabe. And to possibly involve that department and go through some of this would be what I would be looking for.
And I would kinda maybe lean on administration to offer their input or advice on how to direct staff in this occasion, um. Cuz certain things like the rebrand, I think, would have to go through the commission either way, um, but yeah, uh, yeah.
Yeah, please jump in, give us your, and then Brian.
I, I don't know that I have, I would, I. I don't know that I would freeze the entire department, but I, I would certainly, I think it would be appropriate to call out certain items like this. And to put, kind of stop on those things that haven't started yet, um, I, I. I would just ask for some specificity in our directing staff, in specific items to stop, or specific items that we want to look at.
And that ma- that makes total sense, I, I agree with that, yes.
I, I was just thinking about with, with the other item that's been approved this evening, I don't know what marking efforts are. Pending or imminently pending, so I, I think as much. I, I, I don't, I, like, for example, I don't know if it's the intent, if they've made a video, let's say, and it's ninety percent of the way complete. Do they now have to. Scrap or edit or splice on, on to come into compliance on, on that, so I, I think if, if we could lay out things that, that the commissioners wanted to pause for a second. I think, I, I, you know, echoing what Quinn said.
And I would say that definitely the advertising, because we have previously. You know, approved something that's gonna directly affect those, that we would like to see that advertising held until we've had a chance to see if it's gonna. Come into alignment, there's no sense putting out something that, that doesn't meet the sixty day deadline, so. That and the rebrand, so, but I would, the advertising and the rebrand, those major, I think there was a. Hundred thirteen thousand dollar discretion item that I brought up last time, that I thought needed to be clarified, and so. Uh, you know, some of those larger items is what I'm looking for, and those three are the three that come to mind the quickest here, there's, I think, a. Billion nine hundred thousand in the advertising line, so that, that's a huge chunk that we're affecting with our new messaging. Um, go, uh, go ahead.
Okay, I guess, um. This agenda item, the information that was within the packet, there was nothing. Or it's extremely vague, so I have a really, really, really hard time making an action item on. Just that we, we weren't given any information, I'm totally unprepared for this, I would be more than happy. Just trying to be diplomatic here, that you put on the next agenda and you have your specifics that you wanna take action on. And I'd be happy to vote on that, I feel like this is a really, really wishy-washy way to come to. To be a, to be an agenda item, we did, we were given no specifics as to what we were gonna, we didn't know there's an action item, so that's just, I'm just. I'm more than happy to vote on this next time, but I would like those specific items broken down. So we know how we're doing and what, what we're doing to that department, that's just, just my opinion.
And, and I'll go to Brian, but I, I do wanna say that that would have been a good message to have included in the original budget. Because that's what we had was nothing in the original budget, and that's why I brought this forward, so now, I'm appreciative that you want more transparency. But in December would have been a good time to have also brought that message forward. Even if it was very unclear.
Let's move forward, not backward.
Oh, thank you, okay, Brian.
Yeah, you know, uh, uh, two things, you know, looking at this, and when I looked at this budget, you know, I went through the, you know, the, the general budget, then the line items one by one. And, and, and I don't know if this is something that, that we can discuss in the Budget Advisory Board, but, I mean, I really feel like the count, the county really needs a financial controller. Right, there are no checks and balances on this right here, there's, there's a million dollars in professional services, and none of us know what this is, right? That's, 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 that's not acceptable to me, right, that's not acceptable for taxpayer money. And just because it's TRT money doesn't mean that's not taxpayer money, it's taxpayer money, and that's an irresponsible use of money right there, so. I mean, I would love to see a financial controller that's actually saying, hey, look, what kind of, what are we getting for our return on investment on this right here? Making sure that the things that are actually happening have goals, right, and that we're meeting those goals. Um, cuz, cuz the way that I'm seeing this right now, I mean, this is just, this is, it's so wishy-washy, just like you said, I don't understand it coming in and looking at it. And, and I look at budgets, I understand this kind of stuff, but, but the way this is, I mean, if I, if, if I came into my work and gave a budget like this. It would get, it would get laughed out of, it would get laughed right out, um, and so my second suggestion is, I don't know if it would be better to. Have these discussions in the budget advi- uh, have a, a budget advisory board meeting and talk about it there. Or if it would be inside that subcommittee that we created between the, um, uh, travel council and the economic development board. And start having that conversation there, uh, but I would like to see, um, something so, to where we're not gonna go out and go spend seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then we're all, we're all stuck with something like that, and making some kind of irresponsible decision.
Yes, sir, just, just a note, I mean, whatever action that you guys wanna make, I think giving clear, a clear message to whatever. You know, whatever staff or whoever, I, I think that's one of the things to know, that if you indicate that you're. You know, I, I just would hate to see staff's time wasted, so if you, they wanna do. You know, I, I just would hate to see staff's time wasted, so if you, they wanna do a rebrand effort, you guys are saying we don't want that to happen, I, I think that the conversation can make it very clear, and I think that you can make. Um some comments about not wanting to be bound, I think they're not going to be able to spend a lot of the money, you know, without the approval of the commission, without going through the purchasing policy. Uh but I think some of the messaging and some of the, I, I don't know the meetings that they're doing with, with like Love Communication, for example, but any of the things that are shifting away from the policy position. Uh that's a new policy position that you guys may have, it'd be good to give some guidance and direction, and maybe that's, I, I don't know if that's freezing, but I, I, whatever clear messaging that you can give that. Mark and Quinn can understand, so that it's clear, so the message uh gets passed along.
I would be fine with just a caution, and, and if we wanna follow Commissioner Hadeen's advice and bring this up with a little bit more background and information in the next meeting, but I, I would wanna caution going out now. That clearly we don't wanna start a million nine hundred thousand dollar offer. Advertising policy without some idea where that's going and the seven hundred and fifty thousand rebrand, and I think my other one was a discretionary item that was extremely large, so. If, if we can put some caution on that, until the next meeting, I would be fine with um Commissioner Hadeen's suggestion, and if anybody else feels otherwise, we can. Call for a vote on something different, or make a motion, I mean, excuse me, make a motion, but.
Do we wanna workshop it?
We don't necessarily need to submit a motion.
Do we need to put a cap on spending of some sort so that we know that we don't wanna see anything, you know, set dollars go out, or is it?
The purchase policy's pretty well established, and you guys get the majority of things, I don't know, what's the?
I don't know what the.
Well, no, what's the, is it five thousand?
I mean, if, if it's fifty thousand?
Well, then if there's fifty thousand for the, I mean, obviously, I would assume that they would pass the message along, but if the director's. Between seeing today's meeting and the next time you met, approved a fifty thousand dollar expenditure that was against, I would be shocked, so.
Right, I agree. Did you have something?
Uh just real quick, yeah, we're fast-tracking a meeting with the, with the director at the Economic Development Department, he's out at a conference this week, we would have otherwise had, had a meeting already scheduled for this week, but. We're, we're gonna dig into this, pull out as much detail as possible, I wanted to just point out that in um, on one of the. One of the documents in the packet, I do offer the timestamp of the YouTube um, uh video of the Budget Advisory Board meeting, um. Where there was, there was sort of a, kind of a presentation of the budget, so there's probably, you know, uh there may be more detail that would help sort of elucidate some of these turn, uh, some of these lines for you all. Uh but it, you know, it might not be enough still, I, I, and I totally respect that, and I appreciate the energy um to approve this, and, and, you know, improve any, any piece of this, especially the budget. I do feel like, and I, I don't, you know, every, it's all good, like, I don't feel attacked or anything, but I do feel like I have to, like, stand up, I, I just wanna, like, say something. You know, to stand up for myself a little bit, in the sense that, you know, like, this is a process that I agree should be approved, but, you know, we've, like, it's a, what, what we're, the type of. The budgeting process, at least for this department that we're looking at, um is inherited, and the, you know, previous budget officers did it this way, previous travel council administrators did it this way. And I'm not saying it's right, but I just, you know, I just wanna say, this isn't like, this isn't, I don't feel like it's necessarily a mess that, like, I, I made, so I just wanna, I, I feel like I have to say that.
I just like, I don't think any of us feel that way, I, I just think some of those numbers are extremely large and with no, no understanding of what that is, so.
Yeah, and, and I'd also like to recognize all your work that you put into this, and the good news that you gave us today, that our funds have been released, like, you know, it would be, it would be silly not to recognize all the work that you've done, the good job, so, thank you.
And so then what would be the procedure?
Oh, we just, we don't have.
So then we will move along to approval of the consent agenda items, and I will do my best to follow jobs lead on this, previous meetings, um.
You need your bill amount.
I need my bill amount, but first, did he read out all of the items and then go back and do the bill amount?
He did, yeah, correct.
Bill amount first, okay.
Well, well, I went through the items and I, I, it pulled the bill amount up, so I could just read it when I got to that particular item.
Okay, well, I am way ahead of you in my apologies, so the bill amount. Could be approved, the total payroll. Let's see here, Grand County bills to be approved, January third, twenty twenty-five, the payroll was three hundred and five thousand and nine dollars and zero three cents. The total bills and payroll amount to one million, two hundred and one thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars and nine cents. And we would just move on to the other items.
And I, and I read the, the total, so the amount that you'd read is, the total bills, I think you missed, eight hundred and ninety-six thousand. So read, yeah, I think just for people listening, it's good to know, the total, break it down, total bills, total payroll, and then the.
Right, I just broke out the total payroll, so yeah, the total bills were eight hundred and ninety-six thousand, seven hundred and six dollars and six cents, added to the total payroll of three hundred and five thousand dollars and. Three hundred and five thousand and nine dollars and three cents, totaled a million, two hundred and one thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars and nine cents, so. Moving on then. Okay, yep, thank you, approval of the meeting minutes for December three.
Yeah.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
So ratification of the chair's signature on LOS for Building Up Program SEU ALG.
But, and let, you can just read letter support for the, for the people listening.
Okay, and then local consent for the PRCA rodeo. And then the NRCS Funding Assistance Request, and this is just for the application that I mentioned earlier. And I believe that's all of it.
I'll make it motion to approve as presented.
And motion to approve by Commissioner Hadeen, seconded by Commissioner McCandless, any discussion?
Uh consent agenda, they're on the consent because there is no agenda, so you don't have to call for discussion on consent.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so you just, yeah, as soon as the consent's uh motion seconded, then you just call for a vote.
Right, if somebody wanted to, they'd have had to pull something.
Exactly.
Okay, yep, thank you. So I'll call for a vote then, all in favor? That passes unanimously with Commissioner McGann absent. And then moving on to a discussion.
Yes, sir. That first discussion with planning and zoning regarding housing funds, uh during, uh, I've been updating Gabe here and A, Amy. Um the discussion with planning and zoning uh regarding housing funds was for. Uh was for some of the funding sources that uh, like workforce housing, uh. Previous years, we had bills, uh. Sage Creek, good, in lieu of building workforce housing, they could pay a, a fee. Uh we are still in process, I, I, I'm willing to pull this and put it to the next meeting, still in process of finding out the exact amounts that we have. Uh and where to dedicate those exact amounts, so it's not compared today, uh on those exact amounts, but I would like to push this discussion item to the next meeting.
And is that by any chance why?
Just so you guys know, and you probably know, Aaron's a part of our planning commission, and he has been a big advocate for pushing for um kind of revisiting affordable housing. Had big movements in the past, but we've kind of stalled out, so Aaron's really pushed that, so.
And this was to further discussion of using these funds, uh once finding out the totals, and then further using set funds at affordable housing in our, in our county, so. This will be the next meeting, uh I'd like to put that as.
We already have a full agenda for our next meeting?
Yeah, we got a whole thing, but uh, yeah, we're working on, we're working on that most of the stuff.
And I had a chance to look this afternoon, and we do have really clear accounting as far as what funds we're holding as it relates to di- different developments, um but we just. Before we act like the, that, those are funds that are available for these purposes, there's, there's some real follow-up that needs to be done with the, the developers who submitted those funds and see kind of if they did end up building affordable housing. Um as it relates to their development, so there's some, there's some details that need to be fleshed out before we sort of consider them available.
And then the second, and I guess this is our final item on here, was a discussion that I brought on about approving the agenda review, and I. Mentioned to admin already that I would like to see the county attorney at those, or one of his staff members at those agenda reviews moving forward in the future. And then I also see some value in possibly. Mary, I'm inviting Mary to participate in those, so that we have a little bit more of a more open. And both sides can look at those agenda reviews, and as I said earlier, the one item, I'm, I'm trying to. Encourage all of us, self-included, to um make sure that items are early rather than late, so I, I don't. Want to move forward having somebody say, you know, Bill, why it wasn't this long until, whatever, I would. I'm not saying that we do. There's some value in inviting Mary to participate in that, and the county attorney to be there, and I think that some of the items in the past that have. Needed legal review would have been caught, and so that, that was the reason that I put this on here, yeah, please feel free, Mary.
I, I, I think we're doing better at getting legal review to you, aren't you, I'm, I'm working really hard at it, I made sure you saw our press release. Uh cause I didn't do that well at first, and I apologize, uh. I don't, I, I, I like the idea of having Stephen there, but I know also that he has a really big job. I mean, he has a huge job, so I would rather, rather than say that Stephen needs to be there at every agenda review, that we know before, you know, like. Ask Alicia and Quinn and Matt, Mark, excuse me, that when uh you look at the agenda and you say, you know, this might need. An attorney's point of view, or this would be good to have him come for this, but I, I, I. I know how, I mean, you're stretched, you're stretched really thin, and, and I don't know if coming every other week. To an agenda review is the best use of your time, unless you, unless there's something on the agenda that looks like, uh. And I, I think the staff would be very aware of that, and could call him and say, we need you at the next agenda review, that would be the only uh change I would make, I think. Cause a lot of the agenda reviews are like. Done, you know, and some of them take forever, and they're, and they're just, you know, and they're, and they're open, you know, I've come to some, and I think, I think maybe there was a misunderstanding, cause you could have come to any agenda review. As long as there's not four.
Um and, and still, I will leave that up to the county attorney, that if he's too busy to make those meetings, but I, I think that it's extremely important that him or his staff be there if at all possible, and then jock all defer to you, thank you.
Uh, I, I mean, my understanding was always that the um, the agenda reviews at the, at the discretion of the chair, and then, and the chair can do whatever they want as far as agenda review goes. Um so totally, man, if you wanna, whatever changes you wanna make, it's absolutely your position to make them, um I would, I would say that. Uh from my experience, um I think streamlining the process is, is valuable in many ways, especially considering that. You are going to have the entire admin office in the room and, and tied up, and in my experience, the more, the more people the table go under, everything takes in any circumstance. I, 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 I kinda tried to keep it lower and, and quicker, and I know there, there were times that. Uh I'd give Stephen a call on the phone really quick and ask him, ask him his advice, that happened numerous times, same with Gabe, I need, I need the clerk to weigh in, actually, you need the clerk to weigh in frequently on, on things, so. We'd walk over and grab Gabe for an item, but, but um, that, that just is what it is, so I, I think, uh, I think, I think it's great extending, extending the invitation. To Mary, Mary's graded as gender review, she was the chair three times, she's the vice chair at least twice that I can count, so she has a lot of experience, and uh she brings a lot to the table in that, in that sense. Um but, but it's, again, I, I, it's the discretion of the chair, I guess, so.
Yeah, thank you, and I, I just think it's a, a good. Transparency issue for, not issue, a transparency option for all of us to be involved in it, and that's what my goal was. Thank you, and if anybody that doesn't have anything else, all adjourn the meeting.
Close session, yes.
It's up to you, you can leave them for another meeting if you want.
At, at least I think it is, though sometimes aren't short. Then I would look for a motion to go into close session regarding character professional competence. Second by Chris, uh, all those in favor of close session? Okay, so, not recorded, so as we go through that process, I'd like one minute and then I'll be back.